Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the January 29, 2018 Planning Session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon has an excused absence.
We will now have a pledge of allegiance from Councilmember Avery.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a good audience tonight. Thank you all for coming. We're looking forward to a great year. We're going to hear all about it. And at this time, I'd like to have public comments on non-agenda items. Please come forward.
So what I'd like to say, I'm Susan Skinner, of course, is that goal-setting for this city is typically a discussion of concrete issues such as how to remove traffic, how to improve services, and I'd like to add another goal to your agenda tonight. I'd like to suggest that the city work to re-establish trust with the residents. In the wake of Measure Y in 2014 and the infamous Museum House petition in 2016, many of us have very little trust that the city is acting in our best interests. Even the way that the city handles variances, variance requests such as 2607 Ocean Boulevard, and setback requests such as 358 Dahlia are fraught with problems and need to be changed. So I'm asking that the city take a good, hard look at itself and decide if it wants to work to build trust or continue in its current ways. I'm asking for accountability, transparency, and a level playing field, and honestly, that is not too much to ask. I'm specifically asking that for the next general plan update, the residents know exactly what new developments they are voting for and not be placed in a position, again, where they learn that their elected councilpersons have misrepresented what their vote means. I hope that 2018 will be the year that we learn to trust each other again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Nancy Gardner. When I was council liaison to the Harbor Commission, one of the issues that was most concerning for them was the loss of marine-related businesses around the harbor. This is the year of the harbor, and so here's an off-the-wall suggestion. When the state of California was losing agricultural land, they passed the Williamson Act. If you pledge to keep your land as agriculture, you've got certain financial breaks. And then the beauty of it is it's flexible. End of 10 years, you can opt out. So if those businesses are really so important, maybe the city should be creative about different ways of doing it and do something like a Williamson Act. And as far as funding it, I would never suggest to this council that they impose a fee, but to do what we did with the senior center and go to those most concerned. We went to the seniors and said, raise this much money and we'll match it, and do the same, go to the boating community. Because if they don't support it, then I don't know why the rest of us should be concerned about it, but they seem to feel it is very important to the health of the harbor.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll move along to our first item, which is an update on fiscal issues from our finance director, Dan M. Sorry, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. The presentations that we're going to be giving, while there are some in the back, they're also now online, so if you go onto our webpage, then the Agenda link, you can download on your mobile application each of the presentations and follow with us if you have your mobile app with you. So with that, as the mayor indicated, Dan Matashevitz is going to start with our financial update, and I'll chime in where appropriate.
Thank you, Dave. Dan M., Finance Director. All right. If you saw the presentation last year, you'll see a lot of similarities. It's kind of like deja vu all over again. One of the things I want to focus on, it's a busy page, but this is our ending general fund balance at $89 million, but the most important number on this page is what we refer to as residual fund balance, or as most people, this is our surplus. So we ended the year with $12.5 million. That is a result of better-than-expected revenues. So roughly $4 million of that $12.5 came from better-than-expected revenues, approximately $5 million from salary and benefit savings, and the remaining from maintenance and operations. So on to property taxes. We still have a vigorous demand for coastal property, and while we maintain a quality of life in Newport Beach that is unparalleled, that our residential property is still our number-one property revenue source in the city. We're projecting a slight increase of 4.2%, which we believe to be still conservative. And if you note from the slide, the average home sale price for the fourth quarter is bumped up to $3.3 million, which is now exceeding the previous 2007 highs, which were about $2.7 million. In the sales tax arena, we're seeing the rate of the sales tax growth to be slowing. So it's not declining, the growth is slowing, and we think largely that is changing consumer habits, moving more towards favoring online purchases, and then a general saturation in the auto sales, in the luxury auto sales market. On the transient occupancy tax, as the slide demonstrates, in 2018, we had a large aberration, saw a big dip, and that was largely to do with multiple large-scale remodels. So we expect a significant rebound in 2018, but if you notice, it's only approximately 1.7% above the previous 2017 levels. And we think some of that will be coming from the Lido House Hotel.
Excuse me, Dan. Councilman Avery has a, I mean Dixon, as a woman, has a question.
Hi, Dan. Just a point of clarification, if you go back to the sales tax, if you will, but all of these charts, vertical bars, obviously go up, but the scale that perhaps you've used creates a distorted impression, at least in my mind. For example, looking at sales tax on Page 4, projected from 2017 to 2018, we're talking about maybe a $4 million increase, but between '18 and '19, it's really just a miniscule increase, but the image that the vertical bars are creating, the scale that you use, I believe creates a distorted picture, because the point I'm reasoning, I'm making this, the same thing with transient occupancy tax, is going forward, there are some reasons to be cautious. And I don't want to suggest that the vertical improvement from year to year, or the increase from year to year, is significant, because it's very modest. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. So in the sales tax example, 2018 to 2019, it's about a half a percent increase, so it is a pretty small increase. And in transient occupancy tax from 2017 to 2019, it's about a 1.7% increase. But to your point, yes, we let Excel auto-scale, and that's what it did. It's a little bit exaggerated. So putting it all together, between property, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax, and our other revenue, we're expecting an overall uplift of conservatively about $6 million increase to ongoing, or to our revenue base, which, this is the source that we would most turn to for ongoing operational increases, not necessarily the surplus, but it's the $6 million that we would use for ongoing operational increases. So looking ahead, I think Dave's going to take over for a bit.
Dan will help me move the slides. So next slide. So we, as you're discussing, we still have some funding challenges ahead. There's a couple of short-term needs that we'll be talking with the council in just the next couple of months, addressing homelessness a little bit better, I mean, in a more social services way. I don't mean in a housing way. We really don't have that capacity. Additional airport expenditures, which you folks have been hearing about for a few months now. There's also jumping into the short and long term, there's some public safety needs I think we need to address. There's a good reason for the fire department to expand the paramedic program, including maybe switching over some firefighter positions to firefighter paramedics. I still think we always need to look at key safety issues in the community, and Chief Lewis will talk about some of those, and whether that means more personnel. I haven't landed on that yet, but I think we need to talk about that. Pensions, ensuring we'll be able to make the additional discretionary payments. Your council was the first one to say, not only we're going to pay what we're required to pay, but we're going to pay more. We're paying $9 million a year more, and we'd like to continue that, because that was an important pathway. We also always like to be at the right level in terms of our general liability fund, that's under the claims and judgments there. And then finally, you folks have been working also on the Harbor Capital and Seawalls. We're still trying to invest more, not in today's project, which is proceeding well, but the next project, which would be more expensive, in order to bank some money for that, especially around Balboa Island. So next slide. So Dan's actually a statewide expert in this, but I took this away from him, because he does, we, there's a lot of information here, but for me, my brain goes to, where is the unfunded pension liability going? And, knock on the table here, our estimates show that it's actually going to start going down, and again, in part because of the impact of those additional discretionary payments. You see that down at the bottom for where the $9 million is socked away. You also see the results of a couple of good investment years. Whenever the stock market does well, so does CalPERS. And then the contrary force to that is CalPERS is adjusting its discount rate, a really good, important thing. But what it means when they, sorry, for just, just let me back up a tiny bit. CalPERS assumes it's going to, it was going to assume it was going to earn 7.5% a year on all of its investments. And the CalPERS Board has said, you know what, that's not realistic in the medium term, and that was a wise move. So as they lower that down, it just means that all of the member agencies like us have to contribute more, because they're not going to be earning as much as they thought from investments. So CalPERS does those adjustments, and they've done an eighth of a point, and then a quarter of a point, and you could see the magnitude to our unfunded liability. One is $20.5 million, just in that split second where they adopt that change. The next one's $30.8 million. So we go down, sorry, our liability goes up by $30 million, just as CalPERS adjusts that rate. That is a really problematic thing for hundreds of cities up and down California, and those cities are complaining angrily about it, because they just say, we cannot handle this, even if it's necessary. But we are able to handle it, but it's not an easy lift, it's a hard lift, but we're able to make that lift. So you kind of see where the liability is going. I'll jump to the next slide unless any other questions.
David, just one thing, would you mind clarifying that on the, the reason we don't know yet, on the impact of excess investment earnings 2018, and we're kind of putting a placeholder, is because that, we get billed on a very specific year-end date, correct?
That's right. And actually, anything, this is assuming the end of June of '18.
Okay.
They've had a good year so far.
So far, they're at 10%, halfway through the year. So if they stayed on that trajectory, they would be at 20%, but anything can happen. So I left a conservative estimate, just to show where we might end up for the year.
David, can I just make a point, too? I just want to be sure we all understand the semantics of what the Board of CalPERS does, that we have no control, we as a city council, and as well as all cities who are part of CalPERS, have no control over. So you may have read that CalPERS, as a result of a lot of political pressure, reduced its discount rate. Well, maybe that sounds good, because they're establishing a discount rate which best reflects the actual rate of returns of the CalPERS Investment Fund. But the reality is, CalPERS Investment Fund is not really invested in comparable S&amp;P 500 funds that would have allowed it to make more. So it's really, it's a cost to the city, because CalPERS failed to perform the best it could. And because of some ways that CalPERS invests, there are $300 billion of the pension money, the retirement money, the cities are, and they failed to perform at a highest rate of return, the cities are left to make up the difference. So they are more accurately reflecting their poor performance. I guess that's the long way of saying that. Is that right, Dave?
Well, I think your point is very appropriate. What CalPERS would say is, we're trying to reduce the volatility. And reducing the volatility means, basically, you will not take as much advantage of the upside, but arguably, you wouldn't have as much problem with the downside. But you're absolutely right, they certainly haven't been earning as much as, say, the stock market itself has earned this year. Point well taken. Next slide. So this is a slide we like to show. On the left is the 2007, back when our unfunded liability was $2 million, and you can see the trend. Certainly those next two years, in '08 and '09, I'm moving to the right now, and I'm the fourth line down. After the Great Recession, CalPERS itself lost 24%, 23.6%. So when you think about that, not only did our liability start to balloon, but the amount of investments that CalPERS had was now a much smaller amount. So your principal, our principal was lower from that point forward, while we had some good years. You can see a 20% year in there in 2011. It's on a much lower principal, so you weren't able to, we weren't able to get back. You could see now jumping to the, sorry, the right hand of this chart, where our peak, hopefully, was $321. I'm going to borrow Dan's pointer there. Okay. Our peak was $321, and we're trying to bring that back down now. Still, even with really good investment years, it's still coming down just a little bit. Any questions about this one before I move on? Okay, I'll move to the next one. This is the slide that shows the council's strategy of last year, which we're hoping to continue this year, and basically is, at the council's discretion, in other words, it's, this is a choice per year, it could be made every single year, we're going to pay more than we have to. So, and it's like paying down the principal. You're paying down the principal in these phases, 2018, 2019, upwards of, you know, $9 million a year, that's a lot of money that we're socking away. But what that means is, you can save more in the out-years, and the out-years start roughly in 2023. So, and each year, each year we do that, the better off we are, and by the end of that period, the unfunded liability should be gone. I think that's a 16-year period, Dan? Yep. So anyway, a really innovative strategy, not everybody can do it, we're fortunate that we can right now, again, knocking on my table. Next slide. Just a numeric example of that, you could see, here's where, this is how our pension payments look like, if you were to look in the budget. I just lost my pointer. I'm going to use now Will's. This is Councilmember O'Neill's pointer, thank you. Ariane, just think about this, we're sending $51 million a year to CalPERS, $51 million. Now, $10 million of that is from the employees, it's deducted from our paychecks. $40 million, though, is the employer's cost. $9 million of that, or 8.8%, is voluntary, this discretionary payment. So that's a lot of money that the city is investing in the pension program. Any questions about this one? I'll keep moving on. I mentioned claims and judgments. I don't like to talk about this slide too much, but a lot of this is the Flores versus San Gabriel case. This was a case, obviously, out of the city of San Gabriel, that has made it through the court system, and basically, it says that a whole bunch of cities, including ours, should have been calculating folks' overtime benefits based on a cash option associated with their health benefit. Really confusing thing, you don't need to know about it, I mean, know any more than that little detail, but basically, that's a lot of money that we and many, many other cities, apparently, we're not calculating people's overtime correctly. So it's a fairly significant amount for our community and many communities around us. What to do with the $12 million? This is a pretty conservative approach to what to do with the $12 million, and this is just, this is a suggestion for the council, not asking you to act on it tonight, but to consider it. Our proposal is to take four of it and invest it in Harbor Capital, so we know we're banking away Seawall money. $3 million for the additional discretionary payment of the coming year. Remember, I need $9 million each year. Last year, we took a little bit from the surplus to make the $9 million. I need to do that again to make the $9 million. So there goes $7 million of it, about allocate maybe $1 million for neighborhood projects, and then to buttress the general liability fund, $3 million. Our contingency goes up, our contingency reserve goes up, whenever our overall budget goes up. So that needs to reflect that. So that's what I propose doing with it. There's nothing too exciting or fun in there, but I think it's a pretty conservative way to approach that. Any questions about this slide? I'll move on then. So our takeaways today, we are in good shape, thankfully, we have a great reserve position. We've made good progress on the pension issues. Again, second year of the discretionary payment, and the unfunded liability seems to be going down for the first time in a long time. We should be able to maintain our commitment to the community for roads, streets, and parks, that's our general fund CIP, and base operations are funding. Challenges, you know, how long will this last? I hope it lasts a long time. We're kind of in the, this is a recovery that's getting a little long in the tooth, but hopefully it'll hang in there. And then, of course, as Dan mentioned, changes in purchasing habits. How are people buying things, and how is sales tax being applied to our community? That's just something to watch. Next slide. That's it. If you have questions or comments for us.
Any comments from the council? Diane?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Dave, if you could just put a fine point on our unfunded pension liability, because I think there is some confusion, or could possibly be some confusion in the community, that no Newport Beach legislative body in the last 10 or 15 years, maybe going back to 2004 or '05, has taken action to increase that pension liability. It's been out of the city's control. In other words, we are working to lower the unfunded, just by the steps that you've just described, but we have never, our council, prior councils, have never proactively, deliberately increased it. Other, well, you could put a finer point on it in terms of MOU negotiations, but in terms of actions to increase the unfunded pension liability, I just want to be clear that the community understands that. And maybe you could say it better than I've just said it.
Yeah, yeah, to me, Councilmember Dixon, the big drivers of our unfunded liability were things that are unconnected to the city, the Great Recession, certainly the biggest component to that. And then previous to that, our city, so this is 2000, our city, like many cities, went right to one of the most generous benefit formulas for employees, and at the time, the council was told, it's not going to cost you anything. And it sure has. It really increased the volatility, so when the recession happened, the numbers jumped up by so much. But since that time, the council, this council and your previous council, has only worked to try and scale that back, the unfunded liability back, by letting go of some employees, by contracting things out, by the fresh start, by the additional discretionary payments.
Thank you.
All right. Any, Councilman Avery?
Could you just elaborate on the fresh start, on what our employees are doing, and maybe look statewide, what's sort of the percentages?
Sure. But what the fresh start did was, I'm going to liken this to your mortgage. So in 2014, it was, although we've done a couple, like a partial fresh start.
2014, we executed a fresh start, which really didn't take, it didn't take place. There's a time lag of about two years, so it started in 2016. So if you compare the payment on the unfunded liability in 2015 to 2016, it almost doubled in that one year. So we dramatically increased the rate at which we were paying down our unfunded liability. And so we stuck with that payment plan for a couple of years and realized, okay, there were some more bad news that came down the road. Stock market continued to be volatile, and so this council has added to the fresh start by doing some additional discretionary payments. And our thought is to really try to keep the payment ramp from going up, and we want to level, level that payment stream to really kind of start bending the cost curve downwards. So if we're on a level payment plan, hopefully, it will become a smaller part of our budget over time. And if, within 16 years, if all goes well, our unfunded liability will be zero, and we'll have, you know, roughly $34 million available in our budget to do other stuff.
Just add one thing about the employees, because Councilmember Avery mentioned it. So, so again, if you went back and looked at this chart, and the chart was 2008, this amount here, employee contribution would be zero. So right away in the recession, the lifeguards were the first up, then firefighters, then police, then all the other non-safety employees, they all said, you know, we'll start paying for what is, quote-unquote, "our share" of the pension cost, and now we're up to $10.3 million per year.
Councilman Hurdman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can we go back to the short and long-term funding challenges? I'm going to speak for myself and for the people I represent in my district, and if Councilwoman Dixon will allow me to do it for her district. Our two districts are really impacted by code violations in the form of what takes place on boardwalks and in public areas. And the solution to this, Diane and I have agreed, is increased enforcement. And I'm hoping to see plans for that, if not next year, in the very near future. And then if we could go to the possible allocation of the $12 million. I understand the first one, I understand the second one, operations, can you define that a little better for me?
The operations line item is really, we're really jumping into the next year here, that our operations will have a natural growth cost to them, but this is also in case we have maybe additional harbor expenses, additional public safety expenses, things that would be built-in forever costs.
And then, thank you, Dave. And then just a little better definition on neighborhood projects. Might that, for example, be the enhancement of Marine Avenue on Balboa Island? Is that an example of a neighborhood project?
That certainly could be an example.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Mayor Prokhorov, O'Neill?
Sure. Would you mind going to Slide 10, Dan? So it's probably worth noting for just a second, that in a few of these slides, you've got to look at it from a macro level, because we're talking about the revenue and the general fund coming up, the general fund and the revenue going up about 2%, 3%. And then you look at our annualized growth rate of accrued liability on our pensions, and it's 6.6%. Doesn't mean that that's the accrued liability, unfunded liability, because you can see in the last couple of years, our market value of assets has at least gone up. But when we're looking at that, and we know that the accrued liability is at least 6.6% or at least averaging that, and then we're talking about TOT, perhaps slowing. Sales tax, certainly slowing. Please, folks, start buying local, not quite as much Amazon. And then the other, the other part of this, of course, that we haven't discussed, are all of our restricted funds and our FFP, and a lot of the reserves. And these are all things that we talked about at the Finance Committee chaired by Councilwoman Dixon, that I would encourage all of you to come out to, especially in the coming months when we're going through the budget. But Dave, I've got a question. So one of the things that I always, I just referenced is the facilities financing program, and that's the fund where we, I know later in the program, we're going to be talking about the fire stations, and in large part, we'll be funding them out of those, out of that fund. Are you proposing this year, using any general fund money to move into the FFP, or was the, you know, the Uptown Newport developer fee money that came in, is that sufficient? you know, the Uptown Newport developer fee money that came in, is that sufficient for at least this year's contribution?
The facilities financing program that Mayor Protem O'Neill is referring to has always, has often had, I guess I could say always, a general fund contribution of about eight and a half million. We're proposing to make that again. And then it sometimes will accept large sums of money on a one-time basis from projects like Uptown Newport. But we are at least proposing in the coming budget, 8.5 million from the general fund.
Okay. Well, since this is a goal-setting conference, I'll just say that most, I think the vast majority of the goals that I would want to set are at least addressed in this. We're continuing down the path of making sure that there, that we have adequate policing and fire and lifeguards for safety. We're continuing down the path of paying down to make sure our police and lifeguards and safety and employees have pensions at the end of the day that are funded. And that we're making decisions, the overarching, one of the overarching decisions is that future council members won't be having to make cuts to our services based on decisions we've been making. And I think that's being addressed pretty adequately here. So in terms of goals, I think we're on the right track.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Do we have any other comments up here? Seeing none, we'll now ask for public comments on this issue, which is the fiscal issue report. Thank you.
Councilman O'Neill, you mentioned about the online and the taxes we're losing. And I understand that that's coming to the Supreme Court, perhaps. And I'm wondering if the city is supporting, I know we're not going to be there, but are we supporting a group that is supporting that and lending some support? Because it seems to me that'd be a good way to spend some money if the mayor's council or whatever it was needed.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. A question for you. Could you please?
State your name, sorry.
Yeah, Denise Oberman.
We know, but they don't know.
Thank you. Okay. So a lot of good things coming up. It would be very helpful for the community to get more specific insight and, quite candidly, enough information so there is some public trust and assurance that we do have adequate provision for the required fire and safety needs and for enforcement needs that the community, the residents, do feel is necessary. And I appreciate what Councilman Hurdman and Councilperson Dixon said about these particular districts, but in fact, I have many colleagues, neighbors, friends that are, for example, in Corona del Mar and other places. So safety enforcement is not just a quote-unquote "peninsula" type of issue. There is an ongoing and increasing need to enforce. So it would be good to get some specific information so that the public doesn't, so we have some assurance and we're not going around circuitously, call the PD to ask for assistance on enforcement and be told, "Well, we don't have enough manpower to respond." And, you know, that's maddening to the constituents. So getting some more fact-based information on where we are with the staffing and make sure there's a regular recheck, including by our city manager, so that we do have adequate services. And if it need be, is there any provision to revisit this plan for the pension commitment so if need be, it can be tweaked or modified even slightly to fulfill the essential public needs? Not just building, but the other kinds of essential services that are critical for the city to provide. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Duffy. Nobody calls you Duffield anymore. And members of the council, my name is Nancy Skinner, and I have a very simple question for Dan M. I don't understand this myself, but I was under the impression that we now get tax money from purchases online. Is that not true? Our city does not get that, or just is it state taxes only?
Me too. See, we, okay, so we do receive money from online purchases. It's just a smaller portion. So when there's a direct sale in town, we receive essentially 1% of that sales tax amount collected. When we receive out-of-state or out-counting purchase, we'll receive an allocation through the pool that is reduced to around 11% to 15% of what we would normally receive if it were an in-town sale.
Wow, I did not realize that. The other thing I want to say is a little thank you to the city council for addressing the unfunded mandate for pensions, and also to thank the city staff. Dan, Dave Kiff have done a fabulous job, and I very much, as a resident, appreciate the conservative approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Vartan Pramind. I live in Dover Shores neighborhood. One thing I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention and ask to put as a higher priority on planning is, other people have mentioned it, crime prevention. There's been a very frightening raft of burglaries in our neighborhood, and I imagine others, but via nextdoor.com, I'm seeing most of them with that activity for my neighborhood. But this has been going on for a long time. Back in November 2016, I was a victim of a vandalism that resulted in about $10,000 of damage to my property. So this is not really a new issue, and I realize that the police, you know, can't be sitting on every street corner, but I'm wondering if there's ways that you can research or investigate how to get maybe more neighborhood patrols, undercover police officers, or maybe, you know, even some kind of trap. It seems like there's a fairly well-recognized pattern for how these burglaries are occurring, so maybe some funding could be allocated to address this problem, because it's getting quite serious. So that's just one issue I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind us all to try to stick to the fiscal issues if you can. We'll get to those other questions when we can. There'll be a public safety later on. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carmen Rosen, and I have a question regarding the slide number six. It shows the other revenue, and it shows that the projected revenue is down from 2017 to 2018 and 2019. I would like to know more about that.
So Carmen, that's a big catch-all of everything from grants we receive and fees paid at the building counter, transfers from other entities, and that can be highly variable. So you don't see that necessarily as a problematic trend, because a lot of that is driven, also drives the cost of service associated with that. If you wanted to drill down into all that, it's in our budget document. You'll see each one might, one might go up, one might go down that makes up that category.
Okay. Another question is on number 13. It says higher claims experience in workers' compensation.
In California, generally, the, a lot of the defense and the charge of challenging a claim is on the employer versus the employee. It's fairly, I shouldn't get, I don't want to get into more trouble. Anyway, this isn't a real friendly state for employers.
Okay. It's not because of lack of safety or the safeties, not there at the workplace?
We try and do all we can to keep all of our employees safe all the time.
Okay. And the last question is for new employees, how the pension benefits have changed or...
For new employees, the pension benefit is dramatically different. Not only is it a much lower benefit, but you have to work a lot longer, and you also pay more for your pension. The California rule, you'll see that term, it's actually before the Supreme Court right now, is challenging, it basically says that you can't change current employees' benefits, but you can change them for new employees. And Governor Brown in 2012 enacted something statewide that every employer, every employee that started work January 1, 2013, had to be under this separate lower tier. And that has benefited us slightly as more and more of those employees come into our workforce.
David Tanner, Newport resident. Quick question, I may have missed it, I got here a little late. Whether or not the economic projections anticipate the effects of the federal tax cut, or whether these numbers were put together prior to the release of them?
We hire a whole firm that does our economic projections. They do consider the way that the economy is reacting to everything from the tax cut to just other general economic trends. So that's always considered. And this is just a moment-in-time calculation. Our economic folks will advise us on a regular basis all throughout the time at which the budget's adopted, as to how we're doing with our projections.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I think the prudent handling of the public's money is probably the single most important day-to-day task that the city council has. Yet I think you all understand that trying to engage the public's interest in the day-to-day finances is something very difficult unless some crisis emerges. And if one of your goals this year is to improve public engagement, I wanted to point out that the current Orange County Auditor Controller is kind of a model of self-promotion in a good sort of way. And part of his program of self-promotion, which actually began before he was in office, was for the county to produce each year a, what's called a popular annual financial report that provides a readable summary of the highlights of the audit of the sort that our city charter requires and various other type of financial tidbits that the public can digest and try to understand at their leisure. I think it would be very good and useful for the city to try to produce an annual popular financial report of this sort and have it as a handout at the City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Roy Engelbrecht. I'm running for city council in the November election. I'm just a fight promoter, and maybe I've sparred too many rounds, and I know I have over the years, but I've been able to sell my company three times. And I just shake my head at this presentation. When our city manager says in the paper that the only thing that keeps him awake at night is the unfunded liabilities, and what we see tonight, David is still not getting a good night's sleep. And that is why I'm running for city council. And that's why you can go to joinroy.com and see the problems and some solutions. Thank you, council members.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Alan Beek. I am not anymore running for city council. But I've made my own calculations, and it seems to me that if the employees want to retire with a retirement which is comparable to what they were earning as salary in the last year of their employment, they're going to have to put aside about 22% out of each paycheck to fund the funds that's going to provide that money. Now, maybe they aren't going to get the kind of retirement plan that would be comparable to their salary. Maybe the employer is going to put in some of that 22%. Maybe I'm all off in my calculations, and the latter is certainly a real possibility. And I think that we can't get much out of just a presentation like this. It's an appetizer. I think that we really need to have something comparable to City Finance 1A that the city finance director would give to the interested citizens so that we can go into those things and understand them, so we really understand what those numbers are and understand where we are on the unfunded liability. And I would like to ask that the city and the finance director undertake to do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Sure, I'll just say, Mr. Beek, you're always welcome to come to the Finance Committee meetings where we regularly have, every single meeting, actually, we talk about the pension. And just so you know, last year, I actually gave City Finance 101 at Speak Up Newport. So you're always welcome to join us at any of these events.
All right. Are we ready to move on to the next item?
Mr. Mayor?
All right, a modern vision for the harbor.
What I'm going to, I'm going to talk briefly about what we're doing now, where we could go next, and then Dave's going to talk about harbor capital kinds of things. So in other words, mostly dredging. And then we're also going to talk about the concept of a port master plan, which would allow us to process more permits and activities locally. So where are we? We started this summer, right in the middle of, right in the thick of things, July 1, with our harbor operations crew, our harbor master, to try to put a friendlier face on the harbor for us. We've had a lot more interactions, I think, probably than the Harbor Patrol does, I don't say that disrespectfully, with all harbor users. Been working hard on code enforcement, including derelict vessels, noise, nuisance abatement, and then working on improving our environmental response to a lot of different things. I'll talk really briefly about that. So summary of where code enforcement has been, we've had about 115 separate cases just on the harbor. That's a lot. You could see that, see kind of how those weigh out, but we've shown you examples before of vessels that have been cleaned up and/or sometimes removed, but a lot of times, people are getting the message that we're trying to have a little bit more orderly but still friendly harbor. So what's next for us? We've got a management review underway, and that is to really help us make sure we're organized the right way in terms of what we're doing. We just kind of waded into this, literally and figuratively, in July, so there is a group taking a look at what we're doing to make sure we're structured correctly. I don't see any dramatic changes coming out of that, but we think that's probably a wise thing to do. There's some items coming to your council soon. I whited something out, because we have to talk about it at the end, because of Mayor Duffy has to step out real briefly. But we're going to, with the Harbor Commission, looking at charter operations to make sure we're where we should be there. We're going to be looking at purchasing a workboat, that's going to come to you. We're going to bring you the harbor operations class specifications and salary schedules. Those are to formalize the department, the division. And we're still talking about some fee adjustments, and I know that's kind of a difficult thing, but basically looking at what we're charging our guest rentals, as well as if we do have a more robust inspection program, such as for the charters, we believe there probably should be a fee associated with that inspection. I know some of the charter, our charter friends are in the audience today, and I hope that would be a reasonable and welcomed activity. But that's kind, just to give you a heads up as to what we'll be bringing to the council. There's also more after that. We're not envisioning that in the coming year, but we do think that, you know, there could be an increased law enforcement presence on the water with our police department, also an increased fire suppression presence. These are all things that Mr. Duffield and Dennis Dergan and others have said is really kind of where the city should head. I don't disagree with that at all. The key thing will be finding the funding for that, because the, right now, the Sheriff's Harbor Patrol does both these things. They do it well. But I think there's an issue of if they, we did more, would they actually do less? And would some of that funding that they use be available to the city? Because it's all public funding. I'm going to stop there. If you have any questions about operations, I'll move into capital. Any questions about what I've said so far? I'm going to get Dave's presentation up here.
Thank you, Dave. Dave Webb, Public Works Director. We mentioned a little bit about capital projects in the harbor, and if you're familiar with the harbor and watching around, there are a lot of things that have been taking place and are taking place. I was just looking back in our summaries, from a dredging standpoint, the last 10 years, we've removed over 3 million yards of material from the lower and upper harbor, which is various projects. The Grand Canal Project is Phase 1 is done. The next phase, if you're watching the Grand Canal, is going to start in fall. Will be taken out the north of the bridge, now the Park Avenue Bridge is in. The seawall cap is under construction on Balboa Island and various other projects going around there. Tonight, I wanted to focus in on the dredging function, because it is our biggest need right now, and one of those big items right behind pensions is dredging, I think. So this is a picture of the lower harbor you're looking at here. And the colored areas are areas that are not, that need to be dredged. The material is above what they call the federal design level. Anywhere that's basically a gray item there, and there's little numbers, I apologize, you can't see those. That's the design elevation the harbor's supposed to be at when it was built. So we've accumulated a lot of material in there. And truthfully, the material accumulation, I think, is vastly less now, but we have a lot of legacy material. a lot of legacy material in our harbor. It started coming in in the late '60s and '70s, uncontrolled sediment coming down San Diego Creek. However, the city was in the forefront of that and got a sediment management partnership going with its upstream neighbors in the county, and over the years, has really worked aggressively on that. So today, we don't see the sediment loads coming down. We have all kinds of controls from basins up in the foothills by the Santa Ana Mountains all the way down to the creek that has catchment basins in it, to the Upper Bay that has big catchment basins in it. There's a project by the county right now to remove 260,000 yards in San Diego Creek up the stream that we've been pushing them on so that it doesn't make it into the bay. So as I think you're going to see accumulations at much lower levels and a slower pace in the upper harbor, and we're going to have to keep addressing that. The lower harbor has a legacy issue. We've got about 650,000 yards in there we need to remove. So how do we do that? There is basically two methods of doing that. These pictures show you, if you've watched the harbor, of one method where they use basically a crane, a clamshell, and they dump it in a scowl, and they move the material out that way. That has been used in our harbor and other areas. And then there's other methods. For instance, this is what they call a suction dredge. The top picture is Santa Cruz, and that's where they continually dredge due to the nature of their harbor. They're moving sand across the opening. The lower pictures, there's actually... You can see the upper harbor there. And the last time we did that, we used a suction dredge, but we did it differently. We dumped it in a scowl, and then the scowl moved it out to get the material out. So those are important ways. The suction dredge is more continuous. It's probably a little noise-friendly. It's something we're looking at. Cost-wise, I'm not sure how that would pencil out. So just thinking of a game plan going forward on this. We know we have a lot of material in the lower harbor. Our estimates are about 650,000 yards, which just by a rough ballpark might be $17, $18 million. The federal government is... Has jurisdiction over the low harbor and would be technically in the hook for this. But if you can imagine, we're not real high on their menu. In fact, we weren't on the menu until last year, and we took a... Duffy and Brad and I and Chris Miller went and talked to our legislators in Washington and said, "We have this problem." So now I think we're in their eyes. I'm going to think if I can convince you two to come back with me this year and try to get us on the menu. So... But we're moving ahead on that. Right now, we're currently doing testing in the harbor. We need to check out all the sediments and see what the constituencies are in it and how we can dispose of it. That's underway now. We haven't stopped. We're going to be actively pursuing our legislators. We're going to be talking to the Corvyn Engineers, the regulators, to get them focused on our harbor and see if we can get in that. And then this year, I know Chris Miller's been working with the Corps, and we've asked for $400,000 to be put in their budget, which will start the design phase with the sediment testing. We can move the project forward, hopefully. Next slide, they're good. Another important point is, you may not be familiar, but the county has tidlands in our harbor, too, and basically starts at the middle base and up by about where the Ruben Elite was, and goes up into the Upper Bay. And a lot of that built-up material they want to get to is up there. So we want to make them a partner. We want to get them involved this. From the north and south, the PSH Bridge, the dunes, the launch ramp, remove that material even up at the settlement base, and so it doesn't work its way down into the lower harbor. We might be able to get economies of scale. Maybe we can get them to join our big project if we can get them on board. So we'll have to do some talks to the supervisors and start getting it into their budget chain, too. Once we have this material removed, hopefully, the large amount, we're still going to always have some level of dredging, particularly along the shorelines or beaches. The beach is a road with people walking on them, wave action. So we routinely, particularly like Babo Island and some others, we will move that material up during the low tides. We can dredge it up on the beach. There's also fine grains in some areas that need to be disposed of other ways. So one of our thoughts is, is maybe we can work with our current, what we call a regional general permit with the Corps. And maybe we, instead of loading it up individually and taking it out into the ocean and disposing it, maybe we can find a way they'll let us dump it into the channel, and then we'll pick that up on a larger project later. The cost savings would be enough that maybe it would attract to more homeowners that would do that. This is big-dollar stuff when I talk cost. Removing a yard of material in the bay, $17 to $20, maybe. When you do it on small quantities like that, it's in the hundreds. So the homeowners have a real economic challenge. So that's one thing we can do. The other thing is, as we go down the road, maybe we want to consider contracting out... I know we have one dredging operation in the harbor. It's real small. It's partly sufficient. But maybe we should look at maybe another contract, or maybe even getting into purchasing a small dredge. And we're doing annual projects ourselves. We're moving this material more cost-effectively, maybe working on our own channels, taking care of little buildup areas. So that's something we want to talk about, maybe, in how we move forward with the dredging. Sorry, I did that real fast. I know we're short on time, so open for questions on that.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Mr. Kiff, actually, if you wouldn't mind, I just had a question. One of the things you had mentioned... Pardon me. On harbor operations, what's next? You had mentioned management review underway. Is part of that management review a discussion about whether we ought to have a standalone department for harbor operations? Or how are we... What are we looking at in terms of different management styles?
They will look at exactly that, whether it should be a division within a department, its own department, whether there are other... How could we potentially involve the lifeguards in some of those operations, especially after hours? So the review organization is called Management Partners, has pretty broad leeway to examine this. And they've assigned some people with some good harbor experience to be our project managers. So all that... All that will be looked at.
Okay.
Any other comments up here? Councilman Hurdman.
Yeah, just a quick question about a port master plan.
Yeah, I was going to jump to that next.
Oh, all right. Well, when you get to it, would you go into a little more detail about water LCP, local coastal plan, and what would be involved in that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hurdman. This is actually something Mayor Duffield and Councilmember Pieter have brought to me. And I wanted to kind of just gauge your interest in this and see whether heads would nod that this is something to pursue because it involves some legislation. So the big question is, is there a way for us in Newport to gain greater control over basic harbor capital efforts, like everything from public projects, like big dredging projects, to private pier repair and maintenance so that those folks didn't have to go to the Coastal Commission each time? That we could do it ourselves, like our own... Like the land-based LCP. Remember, an LCP is a local coastal program where the council and the staff here stands in the shoes of the Coastal Commission locally, and we follow the Coastal Act after getting the Coastal Commission's permission to do that. So the answer to that is maybe. The Coastal Act does allow places to manage waterways locally. They tend to be bigger ports. But we could attempt some legislation to include Newport Harbor in that list. And Assemblyman Harper is already interested in carrying this for us, and I think Senator Morlock as well. But to get this through, I think we'd probably need to have a coastal advocate on board. Fairly... I'm saying it's... This is a fairly expensive endeavor to get this legislation through, but I don't recoil from that because I think it would save resources in the long run. So that's the concept. I know Mr. Pieter might have some thoughts about it, and certainly welcome your questions.
Next speaker. Dave, thank you. Question... First of all, I think the management audit is a great idea, identifying key operations, roles and responsibilities. All this leads to the next question because we've identified, for the right reasons, we're stepping up the city's management of operations on the harbor. None of that comes for free. So do you want to explain how some of this, we... The city will take from the county. We're currently paying the county. How does... How do we reconcile additional expenses or costs to the city and what our thinking is and the role of the Harbor Commission as we go forward to look at these opportunities?
So we did end an agreement with the county that was about $320,000, $330,000 a year, where the county managed the moorings. Air quotes on that. And they did a... They did a okay job, and basically, they were supervising issues that would occur in the moorings and allow for transfers and things like that. And then your council, again... I pulled the trigger, but by July 1, we were doing that work with our own staff. What we've been doing, though, is a little bit more. Some would say a lot more, I think, than the Sheriff's Harbor Patrol was doing. And that is being more proactive for code enforcement and noise enforcement and derelict vessels. All those things are, I think, interests of the Harbor Commission, saying, "Can we be doing that more?" And I think they would step that up a little further and say, "Still be friendly, but can we even be more proactive in managing noise, making sure charter vessels aren't causing a lot of noise, making sure environmental protections are all there?" So all that ends up taking more hours of people's time, which ends up costing more, which is why we should be looking at what our fee opportunities are in the harbor that, again, not an unreasonable amount, hopefully, but an amount that would cover our costs at least.
Thank you. Councilman Pieter.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Dave, for the presentation on that. On the port plan, you related to like an LCP for the land, which I think is a good relation. Just like before, if you had a home down in the coastal area, you had to go through the city planning department, then you went through Coastal Commission, oftentimes taking about a year. Then you do your plans and come back to the building department. Now that's all consolidated in the city. If you, you know, go out and buy a little wider boat and you need to reconfigure your dock, you've got to take, right now, your dock plans to the Coastal Commission. It could take well over a year, even though you're staying in the same, you know, reasonable envelope that you were before, just to widen your dock a couple of feet. And the port plan would do that. The port plan... You're right, it is mostly for commercial ports. It talks about specifically Los Angeles, San Diego, Port Wyonimi and Long Beach. And so Newport would be an add-on to that. But that would be the intent. And I know legislation may be required to do it. Even if we didn't have legislation, setting it up in a way that it mirrored the coastal's, you know, requirements, like we would with our zoning or our planning, I think is the goal. But it is to become more self-sufficient. It is to take away... I mean, the Coastal Commission has actually come out and said that they want to try to get smaller permits off their plate so they can deal with the bigger issues. So, you know, somebody wants to widen their dock a couple of feet, do they really need to take a year and a half to do that? So I look forward to kind of bringing this in-house. And like you're saying, I think in the long run, it will save money and certainly save the citizens a lot of time and hassle.
Any other comments up here? Well, I don't want to get started, but you don't probably want me to get started on this. I really don't know how to high-point this. So the harbor... The port plan, I don't want everybody to get confused or mixed up with what we're doing with the harbor right now. Okay? This is... The port plan is way off in the future, but it would save everyone a lot of money that currently, right now, just avoids improving their properties on the harbor. It is... It's just too expensive. And then it just spirals where there aren't any contractors because since there's no work, there's no... Since there's no permits, there's no work, there are no contractors. So if you do want something, you pay through the nose. You pay an extraordinary amount to do these things. So the waterfront property is the most expensive property in our city. And these folks, you know, you don't have much sympathy for, I assume. But at the... On the other hand, they drive those other... That other chart, Dave M.'s chart, that's a big driver. And we don't want to have our properties on the waterfront deteriorate. And so what we're looking for is an affordable method to dredge, affordable method to improve your property and on the water, and that's it. But don't confuse the port plan with what the harbor operations right now is going on. It's two apples and oranges, and that's about all I'll contribute to that. So anyone else? All right? I'll now open up to the public. Any public speakers?
I'm not going to comment on everything. Nancy Gardner. When... Before the last dredging, we met with the... A couple of us met with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we pitched one and done. And they were interested, but there was absolutely no follow-up. And so that might be something to consider again because, as I say, they were certainly interested in pursuing that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dennis Baker. There was some reference made to shifting... A little more shift away from using the sheriffs towards using more city employees. And this has come up multiple times. I wanted to point out a couple of things or maybe comparisons on that. So the first thing is... And I prefaced it by saying I spend a lot of time... I paddle out of Harbor Patrol Beach, so, you know, I talk to the sheriff's down there and I see him in action, and I see him on the water and stuff like that. So I'm not being critical of them. But think about whether you would like to have a city policeman working for you in your neighborhoods or that, or you'd like to have your neighborhood patrolled by the sheriff. I think there's a parallel there. The sheriffs are doing a good job. They are spread. They're taking care of Huntington. They're taking care of Dana Point. And this is just a center point. My feeling would be that if you had sworn officers on the boats, and that's what they do, and they're well-trained and they're professionals, that they would do a better job because they would be more vested in it. It's like this is their... They may not live here, but this is their home city, the same way that a firefighter or a police officer in the street really adopts a city. I have high praise for all of our safety workers in our city, and I think that that could carry over into much better services of law enforcement and maybe eventually even fire protection on the bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Vicki Cubero. I've been a resident in Newport Beach for 20 years or plus.
By the microphone.
Last December, we were out looking... Watching the boat parade on our Duffy, which we've done for the last 20 years or so, had the privilege. And we were avoiding the front of the parade, and we ended up drifting into mooring field B, which has moorings that have lines stretched across them as much as 60 feet apart. And we got caught up in it. And I think it's a hazard because it's not marked properly. And we had to be cut out by the sheriff department and towed back to our location. But it could have ripped our whole, you know, underpinnings of our boat. And I don't think there's any warning showing about these mooring fields and the lines that are dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Carmen Rosson. I just wanted to know if there is an estimate of how much it will cost to remove the legacy material, the 650,000 cubic yards?
$17 million.
$17 million versus the 400,000.
1-7, $17 million.
Yeah. And then I see here in the harbor operations that we say Phase 3, ideally, we will increase the law enforcement presence in the harbor. Well, residents in the peninsula, we have been asking for increased law enforcement in the boardwalk, in other areas, and we haven't gotten it. So I was wondering where that money is going to come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi again, Nancy Skinner. Since this is about the harbor, and since we are fortunate enough to have a mayor that knows all about our harbor, and for years... And this is a goal-setting event. For years, as Nancy Gardner pointed out, we have talked about maintaining and trying to figure out a way to maintain services for the boats on our harbor. And she had a... You had a wonderful idea, Nancy. I thought that was great. But it's something that I've been thinking about for the last few days. Is it at all possible, Mr. Mayor, to actually identify a site that perhaps the city could actually own? I mean, 10 years is great, but, you know, in perpetuity would be even better if we had some way that city then could lease it to those... Whoever wants to maintain it and work there. So I'd like to be that in your mind, in some way to think about it, how we could have a piece of property on that bay that would be adequate to service boats in the future. Thank you.
You're standing on one.
That's a good idea. Could you do it right here?
We've thought about it, but we put this, a park.
Instead?
Yep.
And you can't do both?
You're looking at it. I wasn't on the council.
Well, I'm kind of counting on you now, okay? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield, my name is Jim Mosher. Year of the harbor sounds fine. I'm sure the harbor deserves a year. It does benefit all of us. I wanted to remind you, though, that a majority of the population of Newport Beach doesn't actually live on the harbor, and a majority of the residents don't actually own a boat. So I hope during the year of the harbor, you won't forget the needs and concerns of the other residents. Regarding the port master plan, that maybe is a good idea. I wanted to remind you, though, that in undertaking that, you would be assuming a responsibility to administer not local laws but state laws in the way the state wants them administered, and again, not for the benefit just of the harbor users and the people around the harbor, but for the benefit of all the people of California. And understanding that responsibility is going to be a difficult thing, because I don't think, in my opinion, the city so far has demonstrated a stellar understanding of its responsibilities under the landside, local coastal program that we are now administering on behalf of the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Any comments up here? Councilmember Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll ask you this question, or the staff. We did it recently in the last year or so, we did an economic impact analysis of the economic benefit of the harbor. What is that amount that contributes annually to the city's economy? I mean, no, it's north of 300 million?
That's the one that sticks in my brain, unless Gary can yell it out just, do you remember? Okay. Yeah.
Over 215 million economic benefit to the city, to harbor-related, visitor-related, economic-related activity. Okay. All right. Thank you.
348, according to the chart that you guys did. 348 million.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to, but that's good.
We, let's see if, we're going to talk briefly about Title 17, which means the mayor has to step out of the room briefly.
And that's based on his business interests.
And the slide I left off while the mayor was here, just, it was the one about what we'll be doing in 2018. We will be bringing to you a fairly comprehensive rewrite of Title 17. For those in the audience, that's the harbor code. And the harbor code still refers to the harbor master as being the sheriff's department. This would, among other things, change that and really delineate, hopefully with the help of the harbor commission, what our appropriate role is in the harbor.
Any comments?
Okay, so, Dave, I've got a couple on this one. So when we, when we're talking the rewrite of Title 17, we've got kind of the easy lifting and the hard lifting. The easy lifting is fixing the definitions that we're talking about. I would love to see that brought as soon as possible, as a, since we're talking goal-setting, I'll just talk about this. I would love to see that brought as soon as possible back to council with, certainly with the help of our harbor commission. The harder, the harder lifting, when we're talking about a comprehensive rewrite of Title 17, is going to require quite a few outreach meetings, a lot of discussion with the folks who are on staff already working with the harbor, and then, of course, our harbor commission, and then eventually coming up to the city council. And that plays into the next conversation that we'll have to have, which is the staffing model when it comes to the question of code enforcement. Because right now, obviously, if we're talking about code enforcement, we're talking about the Title 17 code as it currently stands, but if we're talking about a comprehensive rewrite, one of the things, folks in the public, you probably know this, one of the things about our code enforcement division is that they're far more reactive than proactive. We do that for a lot of community reasons. One of them, of course, being that it's a lot less expensive and a smaller staff to have a reactive than a proactive. The problem with a comprehensive rewrite, though, is that in order for people to know what's going on, we have to be a bit more proactive than we normally would be, which probably increases the cost. So when we're, when we're bringing this back, especially on the comprehensive side, so I suppose that's basically three major goals, including, I should also mention, I would, I would love to see a harbor department. I know that's, when it comes back to the management, I'd love to have that, a very large discussion at council about the creation of a department, which we haven't done in a long time. And I know I keep seeing in publications a discussion about the harbor operations division, which doesn't actually exist, because in order for a department to exist, the council actually has to approve it. But my point being, if we're talking three big things on the harbor this year, we'd be trying to decide what, how the operations would work in terms of a structure, whether to, you know, division or whether a new department. The rewrite of 17, should, I would, you know, again, I would love to see a definitional, easy go, the easier one, it's never easy to update a code, but the one that's not controversial, bring that back and then do the comprehensive review. And then, right after that, make a determination on what the staffing model looks like. I know that last year, we had many meetings where we were talking about employee counts and whatnot, but this is going to be a big decision, whether we get that proactive, reactive, et cetera. And so when it, and I just can't have, I don't think I can even talk about either of those two very well without referencing Title 17. So that's why, that's why we're having this conversation without Mayor Duffield. Anyone else? Comments? Sure. Councilman Avery.
It's important to just point out that there are plenty of examples up and down the coast of cities running their own harbors, but the sheriffs are still there. The sheriffs probably will always be here as well. It's just that the cities are really running their harbor, really, and it's, so they're, I think they have a better capacity to respond to residents and businesses. But, so, there's plenty of examples to look at, but one thing that really makes us different as a small craft harbor is we're extremely large. So you look at, Avalon does a great job of running their own harbors, the city, sheriffs are there to help out, but Avalon really does the heavy lifting, and Santa Barbara, same way. And you get up in other areas, there's port districts like at Santa Cruz, so there are lots of examples, so we don't have far to go to see how other harbors are being run that are similar to ours. And ours is different in the sense that it's really primarily a residential harbor. So more than any other harbor I can think of, we are a, we're a neighborhood on the water. There's 1,200 homes on the water, and as a city, we need to, if you live in a neighborhood and some car goes down the street blaring its music, you know, and it does it repeatedly, you'd like some help with that. And the same thing's happening out here sometimes, and residents deserve help with that. So that's where we're at, and I think we'll wind up with a pretty good blend that'll help residents, visitors, and our businesses. Thank you.
Since we brought up a new topic, how about we have limited public comment, if there are any, on Title 17?
David Tanner, just one thing for, I'd like the council to consider, and that is the advances in technology and automation and its effect on employee counts and the city finances. So as you look into the future of how this harbor is managed, I'd like the city council to consider the effects of automation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Seeing none, I'll relinquish the mayor duties.
So to conclude what we've just talked about, I very much appreciate the mayor pro-tem's comments. I do think that's the way we'll approach this and bringing that back to you. And I, because we have a legislative deadline coming up, I probably will bring something to you on the 13th of authorizing a bill to be introduced along the lines of a port plan, just to let you know that, and I'll at least indicate to Mr. Harper's office that we might be taking that action, unless there are any objections. Otherwise, we'll move next into a fun topic with Simone Jurges, talking about the general plan. Any other questions before I leave that? Okay.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. We will be discussing the general plan. The point of the discussion today is really to get a little bit more direction of where we want to go with the general plan, and, you know, we'll talk about where we've been and do we even want to go forward. Additionally, we're going to wrap into this discussion, is that how do we characterize some of the success and failures of our past land use decisions? Were they successful or not? What about in discussing some of our marine commercial uses, what happened to them and what can we do going forward? A little bit about the past, where we've been. Back in November of 17, we, staff brought forward to the city council an item to discuss the general plan process and maybe even to move that forward. We laid out an actual process and a plan. We even talked about forming either committees or even a blue ribbon committee. The decision at the time was really to kind of take a pause and kind of a wait, a wait position, just to see if we, if staff could come back with a kind of more refined process to go forward. And these, those are some of the thoughts we want to kind of bring forward with you this evening. But first, we want to talk about what's the current status of our general plan. Well, from a staff's position, we look at our general plan as that it is compliant. Now, we have 10 elements in our existing general plan, and some of those elements could be updated, but in a holistic standpoint, we look at our general plan as a compliant general plan. What are some of the key milestones that are ahead of us from a staff standpoint? Well, the only, there's only one that we look at, and we see that the housing element must be updated by late 2021. And that's something set forth by state law. We know that in 2020, we're going to get the, what we call the RENA numbers. These are our housing numbers that the state kind of allocates to Newport Beach, and it's based on our demographics, our land uses, and it's kind of a complex formula that our staff actually works with the state on. And they'll issue our RENA numbers, and that will be included in our housing element, which needs to get updated by 2021. One other thing to point out is that there's a new law in place, we call that AB 691. And that law sets forth is that we actually have to do a study on sea level rise and the impacts to the city. And that's something that we're actually in the process of, I'm sorry, yeah, it's a little loud. So we actually are in, starting, beginning that process, and that'll be an item coming forward to the city council in a very, very near future. So if we look at our housing element, submission date of 2021, and we just kind of work the schedule backwards, we know our RENA numbers will come to us in 2020, and possibly we could actually begin a general plan update in 2019. So with that being said, you know, we've always talked about doing a comprehensive general plan, and it says that looking at all 10 elements, and you could, we have that on the screen there, those little circles, those are the elements of the general plan. Doing a comprehensive general plan going forward, but at the same time, staff has realized too, so we don't have to do the entire general plan, we could actually be focused on specific elements that need updating. And we can talk about that more in the next line. But the question is now, what do we, if staff is going to say, we're going to, we could start in 2019, what can we do before that? Well, in 2018, we have some ideas. And this is our first concept, and we call that the listen, talk, and learn. And from a staff standpoint, we'll go out to the community, both our residents and our business owners, and kind of talk to all our state, all of our stakeholders, and understand and ask the question of what's going well and what is going less well. Talk about some of the, with some of the residents that were involved in the 2006 general plan, and ask, you know, how did that process go? And get some feedback from the community. We want to address Mayor Duffield's concern about what we wanted to happen, did it actually happen? Did those land change, land use changes actually happen? And how are our marine commercial uses affected? And get feedback from our boaters, our stakeholders. Do we have enough commercial, marine uses, or do we have too little? And what actually do we need? We want to know what works, what doesn't work. So this is continuing our concept thought, is that, you know, we can go around to each of the council members' district and actually have a community meeting. Reach out to the community, invite the community to each of those districts, and have this kind of discussion, this dialogue with the community. And from there, that will help us launch a general plan update in 2019. Again, as I said before, our, we feel that our general plan is compliant, but definitely elements in the general plan would need to be updated. So we can do a comprehensive general plan update, or we could just be much more focused. So this is concept one. Concept two is maybe we just go ahead and just start the general plan update. So staff would write an RFP, hire a consultant to help us, we would form a committee with a mixture of residents or even commissioners and city council members, and that consultant will help us to facilitate community meetings, and we would just start off and start working on the general plan. And again, this is just a concept, this is just concept item number two. And finally, maybe it is a blended approach, and we call that concept three, where we look at combining one and two, but kind of more of a rapid pace, where we, the staff goes out and has these community meetings, but much more quickly. So at the end, we could actually start this general plan update more later towards the Now, from a schedule standpoint, this schedule is really focused on concept one, and I didn't, I did not lay out schedules for concept two or concept three. But just kind of a visual, you know, for 2018, we'll be much more the listen, talk, and learn, get a lot of community engagement, evaluate our marina, evaluate our land uses. In 2019, start the general plan, either comprehensive or much more focused on specific elements. Have the consultant be part of our community engagement and engage all our stakeholders. Where 2020, we're starting to get our kind of draft language in place with the general plan, and we also have to comply with SEQA, do our SEQA review, and that brings us all the way through 2021. And I just summarized on this last slide, kind of the three different concepts. And I don't want to go any further. I know the handout that we had to the public actually has a few more slides, and those other slides were more in relation to the past study session item that we had with the city council. But we just wanted to focus on just kind of these three concepts, and staff is here and happy to answer questions. Also brought Jim Campbell with me, who's the deputy director. He's our city planner who could actually get into the, get into the nuts and bolts of our general plan.
Any comment?
How would, how would learn, talk, listen be structured for the year? How would we, what would be a general framework?
So the way we would go through that is we'd actually have an actual syllabus and a program for each of our meetings. The idea would be have maybe one or more meetings in each of the council districts, and bring up actual topics of discussion, circulation element, you know, get feedback from the, you know, in, we would educate the community on what our circulation covers and what it does not, and get actually feedback from the community members on the elements of the circulation elements. So again, we have 10 elements, and we want to go through and really educate the community on what each of the elements actually includes and what it does not. And again, for us, it's a lot of listening. We want to listen to the community as far as what is working and what does not. And that, those are going to be important points that we include when we actually start the general plan update. But again, it is to go to each of the council districts and actually set up these kind of continuous meetings.
So probably be more than one meeting per district, I would think?
Correct.
Just as many as it would take, or?
I'm sorry?
As many as it would take to sort of get some sense of what the needs of each district is, what their concerns are?
That's correct, Councilmember Avery. It is, we do envision more than one meeting, it's going to be several meetings, and depending on what the topics are and how much we can cover on each meeting.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon?
That's you, Mayor. We've singled out marine, marina uses, which I agree with, and I think that is important. Do you envision other comparisons to the 2006 general plan, what's working? Is it, or we are just targeting specifically marine, marine activity?
No, actually, we will look at kind of a wider range of land uses, of what works and what doesn't work, but we do want to focus attention also on those marine commercial uses, too.
Okay, but it is more broadly applied, but that is specific?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Am I correct in assuming that after these district community meetings are held and hosted by each of us, each council member's district, that we'll be in a better position to determine whether or not a complete and/or just sections of the general plan need to be addressed? Is that one of the purposes of doing it in this style?
That, that is definitely one of the approaches we've been thinking about, is that, you know, we can definitely say it's going to be comprehensive and just do all 10 elements, or we just communicate with the community on, and listen to the community of what's working, what's not working. Maybe that will give us a better sense of what elements need to be changed. Maybe at the end, it is all 10 of them, but maybe there's going to be at the end, we're coming to the conclusion that, you know, we only need to do five or six.
We have some areas in the general plan that are requirements, things like transportation and sustainability that are not necessarily concepts that we might have a good stand, understanding of, and the community might not have a good understanding of, say, 10 years out from now. What is transportation going to look like? What is transportation going to look like? So there's going to be some education required, as well as just good listening skills, all right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Avery.
All right. No more, I don't see any more comments up here. I'd love to take it out to the public. Any?
Are you, excuse me, Duffy, Mayor. Are you looking for feedback from us on how you would like to proceed with this before we go to public comments?
Ideally, after public comment, you would weigh that and give an indication, either tonight, or we have to bring this back to you for action, whether you feel comfortable with one of the concepts, or your own concept that we didn't think about.
And I did want to say, we're going to take a 10-minute break after public comment and our suggestions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fred Forché, Corona del Mar resident since 1979, and I've had my office in Coal Center Newport since 1987. We're a property owner at 4340 Von Carmen, which is one of the buildings next to the lake across from the Pacific Club. And I really applaud you wanting to have community meetings, and I'd encourage you to get the airport business owners as part of that meeting, because in our parking lot, right next to my building, the opportunity zones in the current general plan have three 13-story high-rise buildings that are in that plan. And even though the general plan has a different idea for that area, but we'd like to be heard because these opportunity zones kind of appeared without any of us knowing about them, and all of a sudden, we're having to fight these large condo projects of Coal Center residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. Susan Skinner again. I'm here to ask, as I have previously, for your absolute commitment to transparency in the upcoming general plan update. The last time I asked, I did not get that commitment, but I am hopeful I will tonight. By transparency, I mean that the residents of Newport Beach should know exactly what additional development will be added to the next general plan update. This needs to be spelled out both as a collective total in the ballot summary, and individual projects, and an easily accessible document for residents who want more detail. The Green Light Initiative of 2000 requires that projects over a certain size must go to a vote, and a general plan update adding additional development falls under green light, and we will ultimately have the opportunity to vote on this plan. In 2014, the City Council of Newport Beach had approved a general plan update, Measure Y, that added massive new development into our city. However, you would not have known that by reading the ballot state summary or any of the city's information, because it didn't say a word about that. Instead, the ballot summary read, and I quote, "Shall the land use element of the Newport Beach general plan be amended to provide for a reduction of non-residential development by 375,000 square feet while concurrently increasing the number of residential dwelling units by 138 units, resulting in a reduction of an estimated 2,922 average daily vehicle trips?" It said nothing about the 500,000 square feet of office towers, 500 dwelling units, or the additional 9,100 traffic trips per day planned for Newport Center. The average voter that was reading that would have been delighted to have voted for what appeared to be a clear reduction in density and traffic in Newport Beach, but they would have been dead wrong. Instead, Measure Y removed development rights that had not been built and would likely never be built, and used those to play a shell game of numbers with the voters. The traffic associated with these developments did not exist and likely would have never existed, yet the city council treated them as if they were currently clogging our streets and would have been removed. Instead of an improvement of density and traffic, Measure Y would have added to the congested streets an evolving high-rise appearance of the city. The 2014 City Council knew this, but proceeded regardless, and Measure Y went down in flames at the polls. For this general plan update, I ask again for your absolute commitment to transparency, accountability, and a level playing field for the residents. We deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Duffy and City Councilmembers. My name is Dorothy Kraus, and I'm the Vice President of SPON. SPON has initiated a Citizens General Plan Advisory Committee and has already conducted three well-attended workshops. Excuse me. Many people here tonight have attended one or more of these workshops. We also want to appreciate Jim Campbell and Ben Zee, who have showed up for a couple of these and have provided valuable educational input to these meetings. At one of our earlier workshops, the group brainstormed the reasons why a general plan update needs to start now. And I just want to share with you a few of the whys that we came up with. Starting with, community dissatisfaction as shown by repudiation of major council land use decisions by citizenry and Supreme Court speaking to the museum house in Banning Ranch. Dissatisfaction with decisions suggests that council is misinterpreting general plan language because it is too vague and lacking in mandatory policies. Former Mayor Muldoon asked for a general plan update. That was the reason why the group felt it should start now. The new council has the opportunity to learn from mistakes of the past gleaned through general plan updates and that process. State regulatory requirements to address environmental justice, management of greenhouse gases, climate change, rising sea level, and sustainability need to be addressed now. We need to align the general plan with the local coastal program. We need to strengthen the connection between the general plan and the zoning code. And also, there's an opportunity to adopt smart city planning goals, including accountability, transparency empowerment, and data focus, including adoption of form-based tools. SPON plans to continue these citizen general plan update workshops through the election. And tonight, we respectfully request that you support staff and start the general plan update process now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause, please. This isn't a sporting event. Thank you, thank you. Hold your applause. Thanks. Next speaker?
My name is Dennis Baker. I'm the treasurer of SPON. And the, I want to point out a couple of things. As she mentioned, we have these meetings and that. One of the things that I want to reiterate over and over again, the general public has the idea that they get the vote on the general plan. I hope all of you know that we don't necessarily get the vote on the general plan, we citizens. Measure Y, as was mentioned, was a general plan update, and the only reason it went to a vote is because of the triggering of green light. The original 2006 general plan went to a vote because of green light. So there is this tendency to constantly think that we can do that. Now, in the case of Measure Y, there were a lot of elements in Measure Y that didn't trigger green light, and they were all kind of lumped in, if you will, to sweeten the pot a little bit. And yet, I think some of those things are still pending, and you, as a council, actually could take action on some of those items and kind of get them out of the way without having to go through the whole process. But I think you should go through the whole process. I think it is time to launch this planning, start going on this, make a commitment to do it. One of the reasons I think that should take place is the airport area, which was mentioned earlier. The airport area, it's not as bad as like Wild West, but I have an office, my office is in the airport area on Quail Street. And even as it is now, I'm seeing the density of traffic coming, especially at beginning and end of the day, coming down birch, heading for the freeway, and so on. So we're starting to see that. And when we have the ability to just pop up big buildings and stuff like that, no problem. Just go to the planning commission, get an amendment, and we're okay. Too many amendments to the general plan indicates that maybe the general plan isn't that great. And I know recently, there hasn't been a lot of action, as was pointed out to me by Councilman O'Neill, but the plan, we shouldn't have, we, the citizens, shouldn't have to plan whack-a-mole, going to the planning commission, coming to you, protesting, having referendums and stuff like that. I think that is indicative that it is time to revisit and do a general plan update. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffy and City Council. My name is Adjana Forché. I live in Corona del Mar, and I was looking at the different options you have, and I'm just going to urge you to go with number two, because it always takes longer than you think it's going to take. And so might as well go with the plan that sets in motion correctly, laying out a scope of what you want to accomplish, figuring out which elements are the first ones that are priority, that are, right now, you're already, it's impacted with the, like people mentioned, traffic or circulation and land use issues, so that we can start really pushing forward. It always takes longer, so it doesn't matter to me if it's election year or not. This is something that has to be done, and you're going to hire a professional to oversee that part, you're going to have community involvement. That's good for everybody, so I urge you to go with a start now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Denise Oberman, again. Thank you, Simone, for your thoughtful introduction of concepts. I'd like to, first of all, affirm what's been said by Dorothy Kraus, Dennis Baker, and, of course, Susan Skinner. So in reality, it isn't viable, and there isn't going to be any integrity in our general plan update if we pull pieces apart. So we talk about transparency. There is a need to look at an integrated plan. We've got evolutions in land use. The council and city staff are certainly looking at economic drivers. We need to have a process that will help to realign what the passion and the interests are of the residents, and certainly many of the businesses in the community with the interest of, quote unquote, "the city." If there are economic issues, if there are challenges, they need to get put on the table. But the community has spoken loud and clear and repeatedly, and this notion, Dennis used the term "whack-a-mole," that's, that's really, it shows we're just, we are way out of alignment. The community is way out of alignment with what the city is looking at. And I think the notion of listening is always a great place to start. There's been a lot of opportunity to listen, if you look at the facts of how the people have spoken over the last several years. So land use and evolutions in land use have to be set forth. And from there, you have to look at those elements if you want to have a general plan that is meaningful and that will drive the city successfully into the future. You've got to look at the fundamental alteration, revolution in the land use. Where are you going? What's your vision? What's your mission? How are we going to balance having a robust economy as a city with the interest of the residents? I mean, most people are living here because they want to live in a residentially oriented community. They want to be able to ride their bicycles, they want to be close. They're not looking at high-density living. I know there's some effort to change that. Can't separate circulation from land use. Those things have an inherent symbiotic relationship with one another. And also, with land use, you can't separate residences for, from their work and other life functions that they have. Those things all need to go together. And granted, the marine opportunity is a great opportunity, but it's not the only element. What's happening in the ocean? What's happening in the hills? I mean, the marine is maybe a fundamental driver to our economy, but it's not the whole enchilada. So right now, we cannot afford to wait for four years. We've got, we've got piecemeal development that's going on now, and it's getting thrown in. I'm out of time. I think we need to have a vision, we need to listen, and we need to start now.
Thank you.
In four years, we're done. The city's done.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? No, keep the applause down, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Duffy, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I have several disconnected comments on this topic. The first, first one is if you want community input, I wanted to remind you that the one communication tool that the city has for communicating with all of its residents is something called a city manager's community newsletter, something that's on paper, and it is sent to the mailbox of every resident in Newport Beach, whether they are connected to the internet, are connected to the city meetings or not. And if we want to inform them about this, we have a city manager who's very clever at writing very engaging statements of that kind, and we might consider using our community newsletter to inform people of what we're thinking about doing and how they might participate. The last time we had such a letter was in September 2015, quite some time ago. And I'm sure there's more than this, that all the people in Newport Beach could stand being updated about. Second comment, as I differ a little bit from my fellow residents, I'm continuing to have a little trouble understanding how we could get too far with a comprehensive general plan update until we actually know what the RENA numbers, the housing requirement is going to be, unless that requirement actually is not binding on us or doesn't matter. Third comment I wanted to make is about our success or failure of retaining marine commercial uses. We didn't really get to the slides about that. My impression is the problem we've had with that is that the promise to retain those uses is contained in the harbor and bay element, and when land use decisions go before the planning commission, they rarely look anywhere beyond the land use element as to what consistency with the general plan consists of. I've never heard them being asked whether something is compliant with the other elements, which of course there is supposed to be, but it doesn't quite work that way. And the last comment I wanted to make is, I apparently must differ from the staff of what the definition of compliant is. I would think that if a general plan is compliant, you could look at it and understand how the current development in the city is. But in 2006, as we heard, the voters approved tables in the general plan, setting limits on how much development there could be in any one area. Since 2006, the development that has been approved through various mechanisms differs radically from what those tables continue to say, and I can't understand if someone came here from Mars and looked at our general plan and then compared it to the actual development. The two don't coincide. The general plan is supposed to be the governing document. I don't understand how that could be compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, David Tanner. I'd like to raise some issues that haven't been raised before. I'd like to bring in to focus, or have the City Council focus on efforts that the state is undertaking to implement their policies and its effect on our general plan process, our updating process. In many cases, cities and counties throughout the state are not in conformance with what the state's policies are. So I have the following recommendations for the City Council to consider. The first is that the city move forward with evaluating the adequacy of its existing general plan in light of regulatory changes not contemplated by the current general plan or its certified SEQA document. One example being Assembly Bill 2299 and City Ordinance, City of Newport Beach Ordinance 201711, which states there are 9,000 lots that could build accessory dwelling units within the city. Now, this won't happen, but this is a regulatory change in circumstance that is not contemplated by our certified SEQA document. So I would recommend that the City Council instructed staff to evaluate the adequacy of our existing general plan due to regulatory changes and circumstances. Secondly, I'd like to recommend that the city move forward to update the existing general plan, and in so doing, consider how to address the Office of Planning and Research's proposed final SEQA guidelines update that are now before the Natural Resources Agency for adoption. Specifically, how will the general plan address traffic congestion, which is measured in level of service and infill projects? If the Natural Resource Agency approves, OPR's proposed final SEQA guidelines update as written. OPR's proposed final SEQA guidelines update includes the deletion of project traffic impacts and its secondary environmental effects caused by traffic delay from SEQA documents. Thirdly, I'd like to recommend that the city update its ordinance 201711 to see if there are additional measures that can be taken to protect public health and safety. And I suggest, finally, that And I suggest, finally, that if the city was unhappy with AB 2299, that the city stay in close communication with the state legislature, particularly the Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development, to see what other legislation they are working on that should come down later this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Are there any other speakers on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any comments up here? Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Sure, I had a couple of questions, based on some of the public comments and also a letter that we had received from a lawyer representing a group pretty heavily represented here. So a couple of speakers got up and talked about the idea that the general plan is legally out of compliance. Simone, you started your presentation by saying that the general plan is in compliance. Who's right?
From staff standpoint, we've reviewed our general plan and looked at some of the state law provisions, and we believe we're right. The general plan is compliant. Do we recognize that some elements may be out of date or may need to be updated? Sure, absolutely. But from a regulatory standpoint, it is compliant.
Okay. And the attorney also, I'm just going to see if I can see it, said that it's clear that the very lives of Newport Beach's residents are at stake. Every day, the city delays bringing its general plan. And I'm quoting that, just FYI, and it copies in the back. Would you ever recommend a plan, including number one, that would put the lives of residents at stake, Simone?
Never.
Okay. I have a couple of comments, then. I agree with Mr. Mosher, and I said I agreed with him at the planning stage, and I agree with him still, that when we're talking about RENA numbers, RENA numbers are affordable housing. You all know, especially folks who read the newspaper, that affordable housing is an issue that has been taken up by the legislature in enormous detail last year. It's coming up this year. It's going to come up the year after. It's going to come up the year after that. And the most difficult part of that is going to be the interplay between environmentalism and affordable housing. And one of the problems that you're going to see is that as the state legislature continues down the path it's going on, it is going to take away increasingly local control over issues. You've already seen it with what we call the granny flats, the auxiliary dwelling units. I think you're going to continue to see it. There is even a bill that got proposed recently by the state legislature, a state senator up in San Francisco, that would make it a ministerial act by a city to approve, Aaron, you're going to have to help me on the definition here, but approve any density that's within a, within five, it's within a mile, I think, of any high, not high traffic, public--
Yeah, basically, any bus stations where they terminate or other public transportation.
Yeah. Folks, that is going to strip local control. And you've got to be as vigilant as you are coming up here, as you are against, as you are talking to our state legislature about maintaining local control, because at the point we lose our local control, we lose the ability to respond to all of the comments that you've been making today. So I am begging you, please, please reach out to your state legislators on this. So, back to the RENA point, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns is that the RENA numbers are going to come back enormously high. And if we go through a process, right now, where we bring it back to the voters for a 2020 election and we get, and this, by the way, I think, I've seen a lot of faces in here that were here for the discussion that we had at the city council level last year, the RENA numbers can come back. RENA numbers are affordable housing numbers required of the state, of each city in a particular region. By all guesses, I think all reasonable guesses, our RENA number is going to go up. I think it's going to go up substantially. And what that's going to mean for us is that if that, if our housing element does not account for an enormous increase in affordable housing units, it will automatically be out of compliance and we can't even put it to the voters. Or if we do put it to the voters and the RENA numbers come back around the time we put it to the election, you will be voting on an out-of-compliance document right away. And so to Mr. Mosher's point, that is a big deal. It's a big deal for all of us as we are trying to figure out, because this process will cost millions of dollars. And it matters to us that we're fiduciaries of that responsibility to all of you. And so when we're working through this, I just want to point out, that concern is not an illusory one. Huntington Beach essentially just went through this exact same thing, where they reduced a fairly substantial density around, gosh, where was it? It was downtown. It was downtown Huntington Beach. They got sued by, they got sued by a local affordable housing advocate. And they won when it went up to the state Supreme Court, but that cost an enormous amount of money. And I think that what you're going to find is Huntington Beach is going to be in the same boat that we all are going to be in, and we're just not going to be in a position where we can put forward a plan that will satisfy, I think, everyone, especially on the housing element. And once we find out what that baseline housing element is, and we can do a lot of work before we even get to that point. But before, without knowing what that baseline element is going to be, I just don't think that there's a way for us to bring this forward on the ballot in 2020. So absolutely, we need to start. And whether it's starting on the listening, the learn, talk, listen, I mean, even if we started the general plan update now, we would still have to essentially do the learn, talk, listen. I sort of, honestly, I sort of view one and two being the same thing, when it really comes down to it, other than hiring a consultant, because we've got to get out and we've got to do this community participation in a way that we all feel comfortable with a community document. And I'm just going to say, let's try very, very hard to work on this, recognizing that no interest group dominates over another interest group. And let's see if we can't have these conversations without sending attorney demand letters.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just to follow up on Mayor Protem's questions, maybe someone, staff, city attorney, Simone, Dave. What are cities in California doing if they're in the same type of situation, waiting for two years until these numbers come out? Is there any interim step that we can do to take advantage of this period? Obviously, they're all interrelated, but Jim, what's your thought about timing?
Well, every city's going to take a slightly different approach, but most cities are on the same housing element cycle that we are, meaning that they're going to have to do an update in 2021. So they're going to be working to put all that input into those numbers, trying to understand what they are as soon as possible, and going to do that update. Now, the cities don't, may not be of a need to do a comprehensive update of their land use element or other elements, and so they may be at different stages. So everyone's going to take a slightly different approach. I think, given the date of our general plan and the recent changes in state law over the years, I think we're probably ripe for a larger, more comprehensive update. I think the timing of this should be 2021, once we understand what those RENA numbers are.
Well, do you mean timing to begin the process or to conclude the process and it goes on an election in 2022? Or what is your thought process?
We would conclude in 2021. And there's nothing to say that we have to go to a vote. And I think, as been discussed earlier, you know, a general plan amendment goes to a vote if it increases development over certain thresholds, as the green light initiative, if you will. That would be the only reason it would need to go to the vote. I suppose if we came back with an update that is flat, if you will, didn't increase development intensity, the city council couldn't approve that comprehensive update, obviously after a process and involving the community.
But we, to implement the state, I mean, what is the, let me just divert for a moment. What is the process? The state sent us an advisory, thou shall build X number of affordable housing units, and is there any debate in that process?
Certainly, there's some debate. What we do is we work with Southern California-area governments, and we identify what that regional housing need is. And so every city-- I'll speak closer.
Sure.
Sorry. I apologize. So what we do is we work here locally with our regional governments, and we, and they establish, SCAG establishes that RENA number. Now, the housing element law requires that we provide housing opportunity sites to accommodate that need. So if the RENA says, hey, 2,000 units, we have to have zoning available for 2,000 units and at every income grade, low income, moderate income, and high income. So we have to have those sites available. Currently, we have a lot of housing opportunity sites. A lot of them, as one commenter noted, is in the airport area, in parking lots, if you will. Some of those opportunity sites that are in our housing element today won't be in our housing element tomorrow because of the way that the definition of that has changed. So we will see a market reduction in our housing opportunity sites that we have today, and we will have an increase of housing opportunities that are required to be provided, you know, in 2020. So our thought is, is to go through a comprehensive review, get into the land use element, get into housing. If we do that prematurely, then we've wasted some effort. And so the thought is, we set this up so we can do the housing element update, do land use, do it all in, say, 2019, 2020, we complete it in 2021.
I guess what I would say, in the spirit, which I totally agree with, transparency, openness, engagement, and we could talk and talk and talk, and we will, until the cows come home, as they say in Iowa. I totally support that process. And if I'm hearing from you, Jim, that we have to really draw this out because of the driver on our timing is the state mandates, because as Mr. O'Neill has said, the state is controlling our lives, we should try to do something. Marin County seems to be successful in excluding itself from state mandates, but that's another story. But anyway, maybe I would like to say, just not in the form of emotion so much, is I would like to overlay the transparency, community engagement, district-by-district meetings. Let's hear from the people across the city, maybe draw that out and be as thorough and complete as possible. And if staff can map out a parallel process, what we can do during this time, that would not be, if there is any element that is not affected by the RENA mandate, how can we peacefully coexist and drive to 2021 when we get the numbers? I mean, I guess I would leave it to staff to come up with a path forward that we just don't sit here and wait for two years before we start engaging with the community. That would be my, I want the best of both worlds, as always.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with Mayor Protem O'Neill that I'd love to wait till the RENA numbers came in. I'd love to see this transparent process, which, you know, we had a couple of speakers say that we need to commit to it. Of course, we commit to it. In fact, most of us ran on transparent government because previous councils weren't as transparent. So definitely, the whole concept of learn, talk, listen, but I would agree with Mayor Protem that we should probably start this, I'm thinking, late 2019, so you get the RENA numbers in 2020, and you're ready to adopt a new general plan in 2021 when we need to. But I would not do it before. I would like to see resources that we have currently allocated towards the general plan be used more towards the port plan and, in effect, the general plan and the harbor. I do understand the concept of, I know there's a lot of people in this room that are upset about the projects that are proposed in, like the Porsche said, in the coal parking lot. And, you know, I remember I was on the planning commission in 2006, and when the general plan was updated, and I don't think there was any question, there was much debate over the whole concept of if you're going to have dwelling units, where do you want to have them? And the community overwhelmingly supported putting those in the airport area. In fact, there was a green light, too, on the ballot at the same time in November of 2006. It lost two to one. And the general plan update that ended up being successful won, I think it ended up winning by about eight points. So I don't think there was a confusion and there was a debate, even though some people might want to relive that election. On the other hand, it is confusing with the planning community texts and the different areas in the airport area. And I wouldn't mind taking a shot at, not the general plan, but maybe putting a uniform zoning, call it a specific plan or an overlay zoning, on just the airport area in this next year to try to clarify and make sure that those rules are there and make sure everybody understands the level playing field. I think that's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Mayor Protem O'Neill and then Councilman Hurdman.
Yep. After listening to Councilmember Pieter and Councilmember Dixon, let me just clarify one thing real quickly. I think one of the major differences between one and two is that two would require us to hire someone right away, which would be rather expensive. And frankly, given that we've seen staff working on the public on this one, I'd love to, I'd love to start with staff leading these meetings, and then we, of course, will be bringing in a consultant on this. And I'm not sure that I would, I don't think we would need to wait until late 2019, just, I just want to say that. Because I actually think we do, we do need to do a comprehensive update. I agree on that front. And given that the timetable will be moving forward, I would love to see us try to figure out how to do as much as we can, maybe even ranges of RENA numbers. I know that would affect all the others, like circulation and whatnot. And I've got to tell you, maybe this is, maybe this is being the youngest person on council, but I'm actually genuinely excited about the circulation plan this time around because the technology advances are so staggering that I am excited to see how we are going to be able to lead into the, into the concept of autonomous vehicles, how we're going to be able to lead the county, if not the state, when it comes to taking advantage of, you know, the gig economy. I really do think that Newport Beach is well set up for that. And quite frankly, if the cars on the road are any indication, it strikes me that residents in Newport Beach will probably be some of the first to own autonomous vehicles in the first place. So let's get a start on that. So I think that's going to be, I don't know about the word fun, but it'll be interesting. And so I do want to see us try to move forward and try to figure out a plan where we can anticipate what the RENA numbers might be, you know, ranges, and then maybe we can work from that. But that, I think, would probably require a consultant. So I'd love to see us get into the community, talk, and then, as soon as we feel like we've got the direction, then start the process.
I think it's important that those of you out in the audience hear from each of us regarding this and know where we are on it. I've been on council a little over a year, and Councilman, or Mayor Protem and Councilman Avery and myself, during the campaign year that we participated in, were asked a number of times in forums and individual conversations we had with people our position on a general plan update. And I've been hearing loud and clear now for two years from the community that they feel a general plan update is necessary. And I promised during my campaign that that would take place and that I was very much in support of it. I, I'm really big on communication and keeping in contact with people and keeping them informed, which I guess, in essence, is a form of being transparent. I'm, I am excited, and I think it is going to be fun, to pull people in from the community, get their input on what they want our city to look like, not only 10 years from now, but 25 years from now. But I consider it to be a major challenge because there's so many things we just don't know that are going to take place in the future. And that's why I'm saying that educating people that come into these groups needs to be an essential part of the staging of these community meetings. And I think we need to hold a series of them within each district because not everyone who is interested in giving input on the general plan is going to be, they're all going to be able to make it on the same evening. All right? And I think we ought to consider holding them in different venues within our districts so that it's easy for people to get there and plan them not at dinnertime, like tonight was. We might even consider holding them on Saturdays when more people are available and work is not preventing, work schedules are not preventing them from attending. So until we do that, until we learn, talk, listen, be transparent, report back to you the information that we've gathered from each of our districts, until that's done, I do not feel we are in a position to make a decision, not on whether or not we're going to do a general plan update, but whether we're going to do a complete one or whether we are-- we are going to take a look at it in parts. So all of you out there, I just want you to know that I very much support this process, what it actually looks like. I'd like to see us start with number one, and then implement number two. Once we get the information in, then we're ready to get started. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're starting to gel in some thought process, at least I'm violently agreeing with Ms. Mayor Protem and Mr. Hurdman. I think violently agreeing. I want, I think, I'll speak for myself, but it sounds like we're coalescing around learn, talk, listen. And in that listening process, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel because technology is changing so quickly, whether it's SKAG or other transportation consultants or housing consultants. It would be great to really kind of, all of us learn together what is becoming, as much as anybody can predict the future, but we, as I say, we don't have to create original research on this, it's all over the place. And in, and in your planning world, I know your exposed, staff is exposed to all this kind of later, later thinking, but we would be so remiss if we did not incorporate in our general plan review updating process the best and latest thinking out 10 years. We, sitting here today, cannot even conceive of what that could be other than driverless cars. We know our mayor has an electric car, sets the example that way. I think it can, it will be an exciting discovery process that we imagine, the visioning, I think that's an important word, of where we see our city. And, you know, I will say, too, most cities are thinking growth, growth, growth. Where, I was looking at something the other day in context of our planning, in the Finance Committee, that population of the city has pretty much been, it's right now, it's, I think it is not correct on our website, it's not 87,000, it's like 85,000, it's gone down. But ironically, our population has pretty much stabilized, so, and it may continue to stabilize at that number as the population ages. I think there's so, there's so many external factors that are going to shape our thinking of the future and what that future looks like, that this is really going to be a wonderful discovery process for all of us, and that we overlay that into a planning process. So what I think I'm saying is, learn, talk, listen, start, start maybe doing some parallel tracks, maybe staff can come back with some paths forward, but begin the listening process in the next couple of months, as soon as we can get organized. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I would have to tend to agree with Mayor Protem O'Neal, and I will have to also chime in that my car does drive itself, and it drives better than I do. Sadly, I can't tell it to drive me to save on yet, but it, I'm sure it will. So staff, do we have enough, seeing no more comments here, you have enough to go forward?
I think I kind of heard from four of you at least, that kind of a plan that would implement one with an educational component, leading to a final product, and then you guys could roll into two. It sound about, sound reasonable?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Since Councilman Hurdman wanted to hear from all of us, I feel compelled to say something. But, yeah, of course, I'm in agreement. My only concern, when I was speaking earlier, is that we, we do hear from everyone, and we take our time, but at the same time, don't drag it out. So we need to think about that. You know, I think if, if we, I think we should commit to meetings that are, are happening at a fairly good clip. I don't know what that is, we need to hear from people about that, where this process doesn't drag on and on, so we can get to, to the other more important stuff, once we've got the input we want. So that might involve meeting every couple of weeks in different, different districts. So that's important. I don't think there's any, anything's been lost on this council, I should just speak for myself, I guess. But when I was campaigning, you know, like we all campaigned for the quality of life in Newport, we all campaigned for Newport's heritage and all the rest of it. And during the campaign, the Museum House project was going on, and I would make the statement, I never ran into one person that said they were for Museum House, yet it continued along. So it's really imperative to take that progress forward. And I do understand the residents' feelings sometimes, that all the conversation and all the, all the input, and still, things don't quite happen the way we thought they were. And that's kind of a mystery to me, too. So we've, we've got to do a lot more listening and maybe a little less talking, and just really put it to, to heart in, in our decision-making, to do what's right for residents. And I think, from my perspective, it all revolves around, as W, and we've all talked, is the traffic part of it. You know, we're not trying to keep people out, we're just trying to maintain some quality of life, and it really starts with the traffic. And obviously, that's just a number of cars coming, but it's also technology, there's a lot of things going on. But in my view, that's what we have to do, and I'm all for starting it as quickly as possible, but I think, at least I'm always worried about, that the process was rushed. I just never want to hear that the process was rushed. But, so there's the pace, we have to get a lot of feedback on the pace, but I'm all for kicking it off, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments up here, we're going to go ahead with the next item. This is public safety issues.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we're going to start with Chief Lewis talking a little bit about some crime trends.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm John Lewis, your chief of police. And what I was asked to do today is talk briefly about our crime statistics as we finished year 2017, and really what we can hope to expect for 2018. So we'll start off by taking a look at our uniform crime reporting numbers, and it's important here for us to, to understand some definitions in terms of what these numbers mean. And I wish the slide, okay, there you go, helps a little bit to see what those numbers are. But in a general sense, green is down and red is up, so green, good, red is where we saw some increases. So we track, and for purposes of this slide here, our Part I crimes, and these are the eight most serious crimes as defined by the FBI Uniform Crime Report, and these are rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, theft, auto theft, arson, are the ones that we track for uniform crime reporting. So you understand what that is, is all the agencies throughout the state participate in UCR program, and we all provide summarized reports of these specific Part I crimes. Also includes simple assaults with that. The FBI compiles, publishes, and distributes its data in our national reports. So when you hear about crime rates in cities, it's largely based off of these uniform crime reporting numbers. So I'm going to go in detail to the red arrows here, real quickly. But for this slide here, we see a slight increase in arson here. We had a total of six arsons, and that was an increase over last year, but it was one arson over our five-year average. And in terms of arson here, these were, these weren't incidents that we considered, every arson is serious, however, a lot of these were ones that we, that we had resolved rather quickly. Typically, a handful of them had involved some juvenile offenders, and ones where we didn't see significant property damage as well. We saw, let me back up one, one slide here before I get into robbery, too. The one thing I do want to point out is, when you look at our aggregate numbers here, we, for 2017, we saw a overall Part I crime decrease of 4.5%, and that's represented in that bottom arrow there, and also in your handouts. So robbery is where we saw an increase here, and I, it's important again to define the terms here for what we understand robbery to be. I have a fun fact here for you, in case anyone wants to do some criminal law trivia with their friends here, and it's the definitions of robbery. Now, the standard robbery that you would expect to hear is, is in essence, the taking of personal property by means of force or fear, that is a robbery, that's a street robbery, those are the types of terms that we normally associate with, with what we understand robbery to be. I want to talk about what an Estes robbery is here, and that's the purpose of my little trivia question here. And Estes robbery is in essence a thwarted shoplift, and this comes from a case here that finds that robbery can be charged in a circumstance where, in this case, it was a 1983 case, where Curtis Estes attempted to steal a coat and a vest from a Sears and Roebuck store in Vallejo, California. A security guard followed Estes outside the store, identified himself, and confronted him about the vest in the parking lot. Estes, of course, refused, the guard attempted to detain him, Estes pulled out a knife and swung it at the guard and threatened to kill him. So this is something that can be charged as robbery. We also consider this thwarted shoplifting type of incident as a robbery for purposes of our uniform crime reporting. So it's not what you would traditionally think of, but it also represents the same number of actual street robberies that we had. So we had six street robberies last year, accounting for 29%. We also had six Estes robberies, accounting for 29%. You look at the weapon used here, the majority of these are strong-arm robberies, as you can see represented by the bar chart at the bottom. And in terms of our clearance on this, 86% of these 2017 robberies were people that were in custody that we made arrests behind. Three out of these robberies remain unsolved, two of which were street robberies that we, throughout the investigation, really determined there were some credibility issues. They didn't really represent, in terms of a crime trend or pattern that we were overly concerned with, represented two of those ones that remain unsolved, and one was Estes robbery of a tobacco store. That remains unsolved at this point. Again, all these were thoroughly investigated, and leads were exhausted in these, but that gives you an idea of where our, where our robberies are. So we have the large percentage of it, again, the street robberies, the Estes robberies, we had four commercial robberies, three were drug deals, and two involved known suspects. Aggravated assault is one I want to spend a little bit of time with because it's, it is one that was reflected in our numbers in terms of violent crime right here, this year showing a, showing an increase as well. So what, again, it's important for us to understand what the terms are, and an aggravated assault is an attack where a weapon is used, even if there's no injuries are sustained, or it's the use of hands, fist, or feet where a serious injury actually occurs, and such as a broken bones, loss of consciousness, traumatic condition requiring suturing, things of that nature would constitute an aggravated assault. So if you look here at the slide, the majority of our aggravated assaults here are strangers, and the weapon here is hands, fist, or feet. The large majority occurred between 2:300, which I'm sorry, this is police talk for 11 o'clock, and 3:00 in the morning. Of these, there was one half of the ag assault for the entire city occurred in Area 1. For, a lot, a lot of folks know this, but we break up the city into four different areas. Area 1, for the most part, is over here, Baboa in West Newport, so a half of our aggravated assaults occurred in West Newport. Of that half, 36 occurred in reported District 15, which is generally the Newport Pier area, right up the street from where we are right now. And if you look at the alcohol-related component of this, of the aggravated assaults that occurred in reported District 15, 82% of those were alcohol-related. Citywide, one-third of all of these assaults occurred at a bar or nightclub. So there's a slide here that talks a little bit more about, or a diagram here that talks a little bit more about the aggravated assaults and alcohol-related, so about half is what we see for alcohol involved. The day of the week, you can see there, it's Saturday nights, Sunday mornings, and the weapon involved, hands, fists, and feet. And of that, the known offenders here, the majority were strangers, and there's a breakdown here with the known offenders, and this comes probably not as a surprise to you in terms of aggravated assaults, but what is known offenders, the highest numbers are family and domestic partner type of situations here for aggravated assault. Property crime is our largest volume crime in the city, and we saw a decrease in Part I property crimes by 4.5%. We actually saw a 10-year low in residential burglary citywide, and that's 10 years that we can go back and see apples for apples numbers here that we saw citywide. So that was, that was encouraging. We feel here that these numbers here, while not where we want them to be, and I also think it's interesting to point out, or it's important to point out, that really all Part I crimes are not created equal. I think we can all agree that a bike theft versus a residential burglary are probably pretty different in terms of significance. So we understand that. We had 202 residential burglaries citywide, down from 16, down all the way 10 years back, but still, that's a significant number as far as we're concerned. And I, again, when I talk about residential burglaries, I talk about crime rates, where I can talk about, you know, we're down 4.5%. If I'm the victim of residential burglary, that's typically 100% increase for me that year. So I appreciate that, and I by no means want to take the personal aspect out of this because these are very personal crimes. So those are our numbers here for, for property crime. We saw our largest increase here related to theft, larceny, and when you break that down a little bit further, you see the theft breakdown below, and that talks about where specifically these are, different categories of crimes are. Shoplifting is where we saw an increase here, and this is a number of reasons here. We've seen, we've seen an increase in terms of willingness to prosecute offenders with our retail locations. A lot of times, we've seen in the past where typically this would be something that would be handled in-house, either they recovered the merchandise, and we may not get a phone call necessarily for that. So we've seen, we've seen some more willingness to, to get us involved with these types of things, and to actually hold these offenders accountable, which we think is a good thing. But it also, again, represents an increase in, in our shoplifting numbers. So what do we see in 2017 in, in terms of trends here? Now, we're always going to see things that are Newport Beach-specific types of trends, and one of those are, we refer to them as surfer burgs. You've probably heard me use this term before at some of these different meetings where we've talked about this, but these are burglary thefts from motor vehicles, and they're typically with our folks that are using our surf beaches, that are either leaving their, their vehicles open as, as they're out on the beach and unattended, or they're actual window smashes, or people are looking and they're seeing people use the hide-a-keys and the different things, and then taking advantage of the fact that our folks are going to be out there, otherwise occupied, enjoying a surf session and not necessarily attentive to their property. So surfer burgs are also something that we see, organized crews that will target us in certain areas by our surf beaches, but this is something we'll also see up and down the coast of California. The unattended property on the beach is something we consistently struggle with, and I'm always surprised at the types of backpacks and the items in which are left in these backpacks when people go, you know, jump in the water, or do whatever they're going to do and enjoy their day. So that's something specifically to us, and we've seen that this last year, we expect to see it again. We're, we're working in terms of our, a lot of our education, particularly when it comes to the summer months, is geared towards this type of unattended property issue. So Southern California trends that have also affected us in Newport Beach are alcohol thefts. We've seen a lot of high-end alcohol thefts from our retail establishments, and we've, we've worked together with, with our folks here in terms of placement, identifying, and then also calling us, too, when they've had these incidents. You know, there have been times, too, where people will go in and steal, whether it is high-end champagne or something of that, something like that, and taken off, and we may not necessarily get the call. We, we encourage our, our retail establishments to call us and give us the opportunity to, to investigate these. Our commercial burglaries is something we saw in 2017, particularly with our, or I should say, 2016, particularly with our pharmacy burglaries. We work together with our, with our pharmacies in town, and we, we really harden those targets, and we saw our pharmacy burglaries start to tail off in 2016. At 2017, it wasn't as much of a problem. That's not necessarily true for the region. We also saw pharmacy burglaries and some restaurant burglaries that were, that were a problem in the region as well. Our cell phone store robberies, we had a rather high-profile one in Corona and Elmar. Those, those subjects we caught and were arrested, we also were able to connect them to a string of cell phone store robberies that were obviously in California, but Nevada and Arizona as well. But that's something these organized crews have been targeting Southern California for this specific crime as well. And then our nationwide trends are ones that we've also seen here in Newport Beach, and a lot of these mail and package theft, when you actually look at how many packages, and we've done this, we've worked with our, with our delivery drivers and companies to see how we can better impact this, this issue here, but this is the way we all shop now. And there are thousands of packages that are, that are delivered to our doorsteps here in Newport Beach on a daily, hourly basis. And it's something that we've, that we've seen, we're working together, and we're making some improvements here in terms of how we can better secure these items and, and get things delivered to our houses in a way that we're not victimized by this type of theft. But again, it's, it's a work in progress, we expect to see that continuing in 2018 as well. Pickpocket teams, people think this is kind of an old-school crime, but this is some, again, we're seeing distraction thefts in our restaurants, grocery stores, things like that, where people are doing the old-school type of pickpockets and being relatively successful with it. So it's, again, these are part of our crime prevention efforts, but part of a nationwide trend in organized crews that are, they're targeting restaurants, grocery stores, malls, and large retail centers as well. So for 2018, what do we, what can we expect here? And what I provided here with the, with the trend lines are the different areas in the city. Again, Area 1- Again, Area 1 is represented by the blue line. Area 2, which is central Newport Heights area, is represented by the red line. Area 3 is represented by the green line, which is Fashion Island area. And Area 4 is Newport Coast and Coronel Omar, which is represented by the purple line at the bottom. And so what CAD events are, are computer-aid dispatch events. And so this is just a study of not, this is not just calls for service, but this is every time we have some type of activity that occurs that a CAD event is generated, that is what's represented in this number. So it's calls for service, it's traffic stops, it's everything that we do that generates a CAD event. But it's interesting to look at to see where our resources have been drawn over 2018, and then hopefully to project where we're going to go, or 2017 and project where we're going to go for 2018. And so as you can see here, we've had CAD events on an upward trend in Area 4 with a 13% increase over 2016. And Areas 1, 2, and 3 are either declining or remaining steady in terms of their call volume here. Auto thefts, 39% of our auto thefts, a key was used. Interesting number, right? I mean, we've all, we should probably not be leaving our keys in our cars, but again, 39% of those were, I mean, the numbers are what they are, folks, and it's, but that's one that we're going to continue to work on as well. Mail theft, we discussed that. Those are the numbers there. You can see the increase that we've seen. And again, this correlates with the, just the increase in the way we live our online shopping and the way we live our lives now, that we're seeing that trend up consistently from 2012 till 2017. And then in terms of 2018, I mentioned the ag assaults, and this is part of it too, is our partnership with our ABC establishments. And this is something that really, Councilmember Dixon has led on this issue, and we are grateful for the partnerships that she's partnered with us in developing, particularly in West Newport, to deal with aggravated assaults. We have a good relationship with these businesses, and when we have these issues, we have the ability now, in a very collaborative way, to try to, whether it's, it was something that where a staffing issue at one of these locations could have helped, or if it was just something that we could have communicated better, or maybe somewhat, an incidence where a radio call to us perhaps could have stopped this incident from occurring. Those are all the types of things that we're doing here, but it's still a work in progress. You saw the numbers. Again, most of our aggravated assaults are ones that are related to our alcohol-serving establishments, so that's going to be an objective for us in 2018 moving forward. Traffic safety, and I'm going to conclude with these last two slides here, are ones that sometimes doesn't get as much attention as our crime numbers, but I think it really should because traffic safety affects all of us. And just to give you an idea of how we did last year, we had four fatal traffic collisions in the city of Newport Beach. And this number is not out of line, what we've seen in the past. We have seen years where we have had more people die on our roadways here, up to, I believe it was in 2014, we had 15 deaths. So this is something that is a continued work for us, and we're going to continue to expect to see these types of incidents with the increase that we see just in traffic You look at our DUIRS, we have 485 DUIRS, which represent a 13% increase over 2016. So a lot of folks ask me, they say, "Well, hey, with these ride-sharing services and some of these other things, are you starting to see a decrease in your DUIRS?" Well, the fact is, that's not the case. And I think that, you know, just from my anecdotal experience, I think that maybe we really didn't realize the actual presence of DUI on our roadways when we're still seeing all these different areas that we can provide a way to get people safely and the convenience of it safely back and forth to their houses, but yet we're still seeing 13% increase in what was already a significant number of DUIRS in 2016. Enforcement is what I get asked a lot, 23% over 2016, and those are vehicle code citations. Those are the ones that we, were written by our personnel, from our motor officers to our patrol officers as well. So these fatal traffic collisions here, out of the four of them, two of them were DUI-related. And I'll close with our top collision intersections, and these really come as no surprise to folks. I would think that you're familiar with these intersections. Again, these are high-volume intersections, so we expect that our numbers would be higher, you know, than perhaps, you know, some of the smaller intersections within neighborhoods. But Bristol Street and Birch, 10 traffic collisions, 8 for red light violation as the primary collision factor. MacArthur and San Joaquin, we had nine. Superior and the Highway 9, Jamboree and Vaiview, seven, and Newport Hospital, seven. So, and you look at the primary collision factor here, for the most part, the commonalities here are speed, red light violations, handful of DUIs as well, but those are things that are enforcement priorities for us when we see things like speed and red light violations. That's what I have for a very quick overview of our crime stats, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these slides or any other questions you have about our crime stats as well. And I'd like to introduce our senior crime analyst, Caroline Staub is here, and she will be able to, I'm certain, address some very technical questions if there's a number or two that I may have missed here.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Sure, I'll keep this short, but I just wanted to say, Chief, I think last year was a good year. Obviously, we can continue to improve, but I mean, the truth of the matter is, these crime statistics, I just want to put a little bit in context for you, because when we're talking about an increase, I just, in robberies, we had 21 total, which was an increase. Last year, Costa Mesa had 128. Aggravated assaults, we were up again, we were up 61 total. Costa Mesa had 171. I just want to tell you, I mean, this is a big deal when we're crossing over into Newport Beach, and this is, it speaks volumes to the community policing efforts that Chief Lewis and the men and women under his leadership have done. And I also want to just say, you know, we've seen a lot of decreases. We actually saw some increase over in Area 4, which includes Coronel Omar Port Streets and Newport Coast, Spyglass area in particular. And the immediate reaction to that effort by our police department led to the arrest of three burglars, and the burglaries almost didn't stop, but man, they precipitously dropped off. So you ought to be really proud of the men and women that serve you out in our community, and I just want to applaud the efforts going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and your excellent staff, men and women, who are serving our community, and thank you for working with our district here especially, and working with our restaurant bar owners and dealing with some of the problems because you identified District 1 is significant in its contribution to crime, and I know many residents here who live in that area feel strongly about that. Just to comment on the surfer burgs, three years ago, we did support the creation of your Peninsula Enforcement Team, so we have, I guess, two officers on bicycles year-round. Could you want to, I'd like you to comment on how that has been and how they interreact or react with the surfer burgs, and if that's been a positive. One comment, this is, I don't know if this is crime as much as public safety, but just comment on the opioid issue and how that affects our city. Those two questions I have, if you'd like to just comment on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll talk about our Peninsula Enforcement Team, and where the real value in that is they are on bicycles. And so when you're on a bicycle and you're out and you're patrolling, you see here and smell things, frankly, that you wouldn't otherwise in a patrol car. When it relates to the surfer burglaries themselves, what we'll find is, what we'll find people that will be hiding, sort of just back and waiting and surveilling our folks, and what we're able to do with our bicycles is that we're able to find those areas and apprehend these people a lot of times. And maybe we haven't caught them necessarily with stolen property on them, but there's, maybe there's some other reason that we've contacted and made an arrest for, maybe an outstanding warrant, or, you know, perhaps they could be in violation of a term or condition of probation or parole, things like that, that provide that extra set of eyes out there, but really in a different way, in a very up-close and personal way when it comes to dealing with the surfer burglaries themselves. But again, these are not something that just the Peninsula Enforcement Team does. These are something that's on all of our radar, and there's also some different things, without giving away all of our tricks, that we do to go out and be proactive with these events as well. And then the opioid issue we have, there's something that we've, and I'm really glad you brought this up because it allows me to talk a little bit about our Narcan program and the use of naloxone, and that is a, it's, when we have the event where we have to respond to some type of opioid crisis, an overdose, we have the ability, and we've just rolled this out recently within this year, is that all of our police officers, myself included, have Narcan, which is a substance, which in essence is an antidote to opioids. We've had five saves this past year since we've rolled out the program, which is really remarkable. So this is something that's impacting our community. I would say that it's not impacting our community in the way that we've seen it nationally, but we are making arrests and we are having contact with folks that are in these types of crisis situations, and, but this is one of the things that we have done. A lot of agencies in the county are, there are some that have this program out. We are one of the lead agencies to do it as well, and we've seen some great success with it.
Councilmember, Hurdman. Sorry, it's late.
Chief, earlier this evening, when we got started, we asked for comments from the community, and one lady stood up and commented about robberies and burglaries increasing in the community or neighborhood of Dover Shores. Is that, in fact, valid? And if so, what's happening?
Well, I can tell you, I'm aware of the, we have seen, and this has been recently, some burglar activity in Dover Shores, but I think it's important to point out too, is that, and I had this, in fact, I had the same discussion with a Babo Island resident on Friday at the event that we were all at, and it's, there's an impression right now that I think that is maybe not necessarily reflected in the statistics, because if you ask most people, if you ask them, "Well, gosh, was there more crime 10 years ago, or is there more crime now?" When I talk to folks, they tell me, "Well, gosh, you know what, there's significantly more crime now." Well, you know, as the numbers bear them out, there's significantly less than what we've seen, and really what that is, is our, the way we're communicating with each other and the way we're talking more, and the way that we're paying attention to these efforts in our communities, that is what's driving these numbers down. The byproduct of that, for some folks, is the perception that there perhaps is more crime, but the reality is, is that we're driving these numbers down. So I think it's, to me, I always go back to the numbers and what are they telling us? And the reality is that citywide, we are trending down with those numbers. However, that doesn't mean that we're not going to see spikes in neighborhoods from time to time. And Mayor Protem O'Neill mentioned that some of the issues that we were dealing with in Newport Coast and Coronel Omar, that was one of those types of things where we had noticed that we'd seen a trend and a pattern, and we focused some resources there, and ultimately, you'll see some of these organized crews that will hit a neighborhood and for various reasons, either it's familiarity or maybe some type of nexus of that neighborhood. We, once we identify these people, we start to see these, we start to see these issues abated. But there are some neighborhoods that are typically a little more prone to residential burglary activity, and a lot of those are ones that are off of our major throughfares. What we've seen, and unfortunately Dover Shores typically, in the past, we've seen that. Irvine Avenue is a large pass-through street. Dover Shores is a neighborhood that's easily accessible on a number of different points along there, but we've also seen those in some of the other, some of our other neighborhoods on the east side of town as well. Jamboree, we had some issues in the ABC streets last year, specifically where we would have organized crews that would come down and target these neighborhoods, and they were able to quickly grab one of our major arterial routes to the 73 or the 405 freeway, and they're out of town quickly. So we've seen that along the MacArthur corridor as well. So that's, part of it has to do with the placement of these neighborhoods, but again, these are things that our folks are aware of, we're talking about. And again, when you talk about data and our data-driven approach to crime fighting and traffic safety, these are all discussions that we're having at the street level with our folks and in our roll calls every day.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery, please.
Yeah, it's really great to get the numbers because it does feel, you know, you get a sense that it's worse, and to that end, I can't help but ask, what's your thoughts about Nextdoor are?
I'm going to answer this for Mr. Kiff. I am. I have a love-hate relationship with Nextdoor, frankly, and the good thing is, is that we have, what is up happening is, I have young kids, so you remember that telephone game that played where one starts off with one thing, and by the time it gets to the end, it's a lot different? So, and that's what happens with Nextdoor a lot of times. And again, but when I say the love-hate relationship, the part that I love about it is that we have our neighbors and they are connecting to each other in this way. And I think that our lives are so busy now that a lot of times, and my neighborhood is one that, you know, I can speak to as well, where, you know, we get done, we pull our cars in the driveway, and we're done for the night, and we're checked in, to our lives, and we're not necessarily as, in some areas, as community-focused as perhaps we were, you know, 20, 25 years ago. So Nextdoor allows us to do that, but I always remind people too, what you see on Nextdoor, what you hear on Nextdoor, it's important to verify with us. If there's something there that concerns you, we have dispatchers working all night long that can answer your questions and give you the actual feedback. Email your area commander, and we can tell you, and we're happy to do that. So, but again, I've seen things come up from one side of Nextdoor and be significantly different than the actual, and sometimes it's been incidents that I've actually been a part of, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, this is a little bit different than what I actually saw."
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that and remind everyone, if you haven't signed up for Nixle, N-I-X-L-E, Nixle, the other thing that you can always do if you want to double-check what's going on in your neighborhood, especially against Nextdoor, which I have more of a hate-hate relationship with Nextdoor, go to our website, our city website, and type in the following three letters, G-I-S. It has a lot more information than just what's going on in your neighborhood, but if you want to find out what's gone on the last seven days in any part of our city in terms of even just a routine call into, for a police action, just even a review, take a look. You'll actually, you'll learn something, I promise.
All right, thank you. Any other comments up here? I see none, so I'd like to take it out to the public. Are there any public comments on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor Duffy, and members of the City Council. I'm Gary Sherwin from Newport Beach and Company, and I'll just kind of lay it out straight. Chief Lewis and the Newport Beach Police Department are freaking awesome. That's a technical term in tourism, and I just, and I want to kind of say that, you know, that we've been talking about a lot of the stuff the bad guys do and a lot of crime statistics. There's a very important role that the police department also plays, and that is, they are our ambassadors to so many of our guests. And there are so many interactions, large and small, that our visitors have with our police officers. They interact with more of our police officers than those of us in the hospitality industry very often. They help figure out where people are when they're lost, they give them great places to recommend if they want a burger, anything that they need to help guide them and make their experience here. The police department has been a phenomenal frontline guest ambassador for this community. And I just want to thank the chief and the police department because, yes, they're taking care of the bad guys, but I think most of the time, they're also spending time taking care of the good guys, many of whom are visiting our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Dennis?
Dennis Baker, quick question, that's what I'd say, non-traditional patrolling. Are there numbers or statistics or comments by you on anything that doesn't involve a patrol car? In other words, you mentioned bicycle, bicycle foot patrol, the patrolman that's in the schools. I noticed at Lake Harbor, there's always, so if you could just comment on those non-vehicle patrol car-type policing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we've been able to maintain in Newport Beach, and again, in support with the City Council and understanding the importance of really being there. We have the traditional law enforcement role, which is the one that we think of, the police officer in a patrol car, and that'd be very important, but there's also a number of other programs that we have. Our school resource officers is through a partnership with Newport Mesa where we are able to staff police officers at our high schools and also to our junior highs on the east and west side of town. That is a very big deal. We have those, but we also have another portion of our crime prevention program as well, where we have staff that are out at our elementary schools throughout the city, and we call it our Step Up Program, but this is a program that was something that, a lot of us are familiar with the DARE program that really focused on drugs, where we do that type of education, but we also focus on character as well, and that's part of what the Step Up Program and what we're doing in our elementary schools. We really do try to embrace non-traditional tactics and techniques around here because that's, again, when you understand the numbers and you're focusing specifically on these crime trends and how these crimes are being perpetrated, there are some non-traditional ways to get into neighborhoods, to work, whether it be if we take our detectives and we put them out in plain clothes to specifically impact burglaries. Or our surfer burglaries is another one where, you know, perhaps maybe an undercover operation or a sting-type of operation is something that we would embrace as well. With our bars, we have grant funding that we've secured to also work on, again, some non-traditional types of accountability measures within our ABC establishments, which have been very successful, whether it's a minor decoy operation or it's looking within these establishments for separate, you know, ABC violations or something that we handle with our detectives as well. And there's, with traffic safety, again, our motors are very important towards that, but also when you look at our schools as well, our motors play a big part of, a lot of times with, we get the complaints for our schools, and we have, you know, sometimes it's our parents that are being impatient, but it's also folks, particularly over here in Newport L., is one that I get a lot of complaints about. that, particularly over here in Newport L, is one that I get a lot of complaints about, people that aren't as respectful of the school and their needs there as they should be, I think, when they're driving. Our motors being a part of that is something that's critically important, not just to this school, but throughout the city. And then, things like foot patrol, we still do that. And that's kind of an old-school notion. But if you will see, particularly in our bar districts at night, that you'll see officers out on foot that are walking through our alleys, and that are out there actually, boots on the ground, trying to impact these certain problems. So again, we like to have a non-traditional approach to dealing, or I should say, one that's a specific approach that's efficient, but it's also targeted towards the outcome here of crime prevention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Carol Drew. And I have a suggestion. Perhaps next time you have a meeting at 5:30, you could, instead of catering cookies and fruit, you have tacos and hot dogs.
Prime ribs?
No, no, just tacos and hot dogs would be just fine. And we'd be a lot less hostile. So that's number one. Number two, we are spending, as a city, millions of dollars in different areas for all kinds of wonderful things. And I think I mentioned this to you before. King's Road is a sleepy little street with no stop signs, and we really don't want speed bumps. And I'd suggested to my neighbors, perhaps we ought to fund cameras at various areas so that we could catch these people. Our house and our cars, well, I'll share with you, my husband yells at me because I don't always lock the car. And it's maybe my fault because they break into my car, but they've done it four times, two cars in our street, in our driveway. The last time in a 70 Chevy convertible where there was nothing for them to find, but they were sneaking around in there up my driveway. Makes me feel a little violated. I think we should perhaps put aside some of the millions of dollars we're spending on other things, and put more cops in the ground, put more cars out there for you, so that they can be driving up and down, not our bar area, on our street or anything that would call it. But my niece that just came from the east coast, and just graduated from college, and was aware of what marijuana smelled like, said that little park down on King's Road seems to be an area where, in the evening, there's lots of smoke. And one of my neighbors that walks his dog said, Carol Ian, did you know that there's drug paraphernalia down at the park over there? Various other unmentionable things. But that's stuff that makes, means to me that perhaps we ought to have more cops in our, more policemen in our area, because we do value what you do. And maybe if there were more of you, these things wouldn't be happening to us. And I appreciate everything you do. Thank you. And hot dogs and tacos, remember that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Loriann Petry. And I have a question, two questions. One is about these. And if you have statistics about traffic violations that are related to these, I'm an offender. I try to not be. But I know when I look in my rearview mirror, and somebody is behind me, and there's a glow on their face, or I'm looking ahead and there's a glow, I know what they're doing. And I really try to just throw it to the side and not do it. But how many violations do we have related to these? And how serious are they? And then I'll ask my second question.
I have the specific numbers for citations that we've issued for distracted driving. But I'd be happy to provide that to you because we do track it. And we also do specific enforcement efforts where we're doing nothing other than that, in targeting distracted driving. But candidly, it's a problem. I mean, it really is. And I notice I, I don't think I could get to work every day. I take Pacific Coast Highway through West Newport every day to get to work. And I think if I were to stop everybody that I saw, because obviously I'm in a plain vehicle, I don't think I'd ever get to work. And it's one of those things where it's something that we all need to really understand, is that distracted driving is a problem. It does relate to inattention and your ability to drive a motor vehicle safely, frankly. So this is something that we do enforce. It's not popular. And I could tell you from people that receive citations for it, it's something that's typically not received very well. But it is something that we do enforce. And I do have those numbers available. I just don't have them with me tonight.
This opportunity on behalf of our Public Works Department, it's also ruining our whole traffic infrastructure with our signal timing and everything else. Just so everybody knows, when you're at a stoplight, if you're in traffic flow, it's against the law to be sitting there looking at your phone. And every, you take a second, the person behind you takes a second, you've just ruined millions of dollars that we've spent on signal timing. Don't get me started.
Sorry. Second question. I am still young enough, but I'm too old to really boogie board. But I do go down to Black East throughout the summer and boogie board. And then, I have noticed, over the last two to three years, a much greater influx of people selling papaya on the beach, and their wares. And I feel so terrible saying no. And I really feel terrible in front of the grandkids saying no, because I mean, it's, but I don't, is that legal?
The simple answer is no. It's not. And it's a violation of municipal code. And again, that's something that Councilmember Dixon mentioned earlier. Our Peninsula Enforcement Team, that's one of those things that they work on as well. But also our patrol officers, and I'm down at Black East during the summer too, so I know exactly what you're talking about. And that's one of those things that we do enforce. Typically, there's advisements can be appropriate in certain times. But this is something we'll also issue citations for. And the other portion of this as well, is we do have businesses in that district as well, that are selling the same types of wares that these folks in violation of municipal code are selling out there as well. So it's a complaint that we not just receive for residents out there, but it's also from our business community as well. So it's something we track and we enforce when appropriate.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Alan Beek. And I've had no unpleasant experiences with the police force in Newport Beach. I don't know whether it's because I'm good or they're good, I hope both. But I've had friends and family that had unpleasant experiences in Huntington Beach and with Orange County. And you only have to read the news to know that there are many cities throughout this country who are very indiscriminate in the people that they put in their police force, or maybe even seek the kind that like to be masterful and have power over people and throw their weight around. And terrible things happen as a result. And people in every city should know what their city police force is doing, to see they get the right kind of people in and keep the wrong kind of people out. Can you give us any information about whether you do any kind of psychological testing, or what we do to make sure that we have a clean police force?
Thank you for that question, because that gives me an opportunity to talk about our recruiting efforts, which is a big one. And to answer your question, yes, we do have psychological evaluations. We actually do have a robust background investigation process that goes through with every individual that we hire. And it's not just our police officers, our 911 dispatchers, the folks at the front desk, they all go through the same rigors. But for our police officers, to begin with, you're going to have to go through a written application process, a written test, you have to pass a physical agility test. And then you actually get interviewed. And that interview process is not just a, hey, everybody passes here. We get, you know, hundreds of folks that show up to each one of our tests. And we will take, out of that interview process, a very select few. And then out of that select few, we submit them to a background investigation. And I mean, we go all the way back to your Nextdoor neighbor, your high school transcripts, I mean, you name it, it is all out there. It's a very uncomfortable process. And it also involves a polygraph examination at the end of this, to verify that you told us the truth. So at the end of this, at the end of this entire process, we do learn some things about some folks that we don't feel would make them appropriate members of our police force, and we don't hire them. And I'll tell you, roughly, we hire about maybe one out of 1,000 applications that we get. And that's a number that we've seen time and time again. Sometimes we get lucky, and maybe there's a good group of recruits that come through, and we see some folks that are worthwhile applicants, we push them through. But it is a very labor-intensive process. It is something that we devote a lot of time and resources to. With our human resources staff does a great job helping us out. But this is one that we, again, I look at these folks, I never look at them as a number. I look at a 30-year commitment to these people and bring them on the force. And candidly, the expectations for a Newport Beach police officer are high. They really are. And there's a lot of, quote, hand wringing that goes into every single one of these decisions. Careful consideration. And we think we do a pretty good job of finding the best. And that's what our standard is.
Thank you. I don't think there are any other speakers out there. Thank you, Chief Lewis, and our city manager, Dave. Could you have at least found a police chief that likes what he does? I mean, somebody that would get into it a little bit, next time?
We're very lucky to have him.
We are. We are.
I'll ask you folks the next question. We, it is approaching nine o'clock. We have an item next about the fire station projects, and that may be of fairly good interest. I could move the airport one to a study session, because there's not an action, it's just an update on that one. But I want to be respectful of the audience, too. Do you have a preference either way?
How many, how many folks are here for the airport?
Two.
Two? Are you here, can I just ask, as a matter of making sure we cover what you'd like to hear, would you, would you like to make some public comments on it? Or did you want to hear the update? Okay. Yeah, and I, we do want to be respectful, make sure that you came for an item. So maybe, Mr. Mayor, we could just open it up to public comments on the issue and make sure...
Absolutely. That's a great idea. So, are there any public comments? Would anyone like to come up and speak? Were there questions? You could get up there and ask a question. That's what we're trying to delay. It's a lot like the other ones. It's the same thing over and over. But it's, it can be done some other time.
Why don't I have Mark go? Because I did want you to talk about fire stations, and then you guys can noodle that for a few minutes. Mark said he can do a quick version here.
Very quick. Mayor, City Councilmember is Mark Fikovitch. I'm going to go through the fire stations that are in the works right now. You're all familiar with the Corona Del Mar Fire Station and Branch Library. It's currently out to bid. There's handouts in the back, and the presentation's available to the public. But basically, the bid's open February 8. And we're hoping to be at the City Council March 8 to present the construction contract. And the key feature of this is, you know, all of the aspects of the fire station and library, but about the temporary fire station location, which is going to be over at the Oasis Auxiliary Parking Lot. And there's a little circle kind of showing where that's going to be going. And the trailers are coming on February 12 to move that temporary fire station. And then we've all talked in the past, too, about our Lido Fire Station, and City Council approved the purchase of the former McDonald's site over at the corner of 28th Street and Newport Boulevard. And that process, the property's in escrow. Entitlements will take about 18 months in the design. And we're planning to demolish the building here in March or April, and then turn the remainder of the parking lot into a municipal parking lot on a temporary basis. The Mariners Fire Station off Irvine Boulevard, you can see the picture up on top, that's what it used to look like. And we're about 60% complete with the new garage apparatus bay. And then we have two other stations that are getting some remodeling efforts in terms of remodels and turnout gears and things to make the fire department more functional and up to date. All the projects we've completed this year, or partial lists, I should say, projects that are in construction, in particular Newport Heights Concrete Alley's, or curb ramps over in the port streets, I'll recognize, and our playground rehabs are some good ones that have some really good community impacts, or community benefit, I should say. And then projects coming up, just want to, you know, in addition to the fire stations, we have the storm drain projects, which are the things that we build that we bury very quickly. And then we have also the Newport Elementary Park Playground Project, which is out to bid. And then West Coast Highway, we're this close, Councilmember Avery, you're getting that permit, this close. And that's it. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to thank everybody for...
I had one comment.
Oh, you wanted, I'm sorry. Wow.
Okay. Loriann Petry. And I am just going to comment a little bit about the airport, because I've been, I've become involved with a group that is very involved. And I can see this as an issue, am I doing that? I can see this as an issue that's truly going to impact the city potentially very negatively, unless we start to work on the, not just the noise, but the development of the airport as it goes forward. And I'm bringing this up because it's an election year, and four of the supervisors are going, there will be four seats open at the supervisor level. Right now, we're kind of at a status quo. It could tilt very definitely after this next election. And I think we need, as a council, to be very aware of what we need to do, the most we can do for the residents of this city. Because at some point, if they decide to extend that runway over the 73, which has already been proposed and seconded by a grand jury in 2014, they are looking at much bigger, much heavier planes. And it's a very, very frightening thought for the entire city. I know what it does to a city. I think everybody here knows what it does to a city. An airport is not a good thing. And the bigger it gets, the residents suffer more and more until they finally actually have to do something, like leave. But anyway, I'm just making the comment. Dave, and you, I went to the Michelle Steele meeting where our supervisor was not present. It was all about her. No show.
Quickly to Lori's point, it hasn't come up in the forums yet. The city has an agreement with the county that the only way they can extend a runway, or add a runway, is that the City Council has to approve it. That's an agreement. So that's, that's really nice assurance from the community's part. That's not to say we need to, we still need to be hyper-aware and hyper-cautious. But please know that that agreement is in place.
Didn't we just sign a 50-year?
It's 2006. It's an old agreement.
For 50 years?
That's the settlement agreement about what happens at the airport in terms of the amount of planes. But know that probably three councils ago, they did this agreement that says, only could you extend the runway or add a second one if the City Council in Newport Beach agreed to it.
But didn't we just sign a 50-year lease with the Newport Golf Club or something?
That's a factor, too. I'm sorry. I was getting to your point. Right. It's indefinite.
Perpetuity?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Duffy. My name is Jim Moser. Regarding the airport, I wanted to point out that Spheres Agreement, perhaps inadvertently, seems to have disappeared from the city's website. It would be, it would be good to put it back so people can see what it is. Because I kind of think it requires our agreement only for extension to the south, not necessarily if the runway was going to be extended to the north. But the comment I wanted to make is about the item that just concluded about the fire stations. And I'm wondering if we could get some clarification of what's going on with the Mariners Fire Station. I realize we're doing a million-dollar upgrade of the garage, because the old one was an inch or two, too short, the door of it, for a fire engine to go in. But the new one that we saw, the picture of it, looks like the giraffe house at the zoo. It looks like the new door will be big enough, you could put two fire station engines on top of each other and still drive in. And I'm wondering if that's some reason for that? Are we expecting super-tall fire engines in the future? And then, second, at the last council meeting, Mayor Duffy was mentioning about our early warning of earthquakes, one purpose of which is to get the fire engines out of the, out of the stations before the station crashed down on them. A super-high building just looks like it's being built to fall down. So why are we making it so tall? Thank you.
Very quickly, the height is the current standard for all fire engines and fire stations. And the real basic reason why is, is the front cab of the fire engine can now tilt open and be open and accessible to the firefighters inside the station. So that's why they have 14-foot-high ceilings inside the station. And I'll just remind you, too, the old station, the old apparatus equipment, the old fire engine, only fit in the old garage if it was fully loaded with fuel and water. But it's functionally, if you're going to do it correctly, you want to make it so it's current standard for all engines, and basically so they can open the cab. The current station is designed for all, you know, current seismic safety standards. The old, the old part is being connected to it, and it's, everything's being connected and upgraded. And I can talk to you, Jim, about that afterwards, if you have any more questions.
Okay. Any other public comments? Seeing none, seeing none up here. Time to, for dinner. Okay. Any other public comments? Seeing none, seeing none up here. Time to, for dinner. We are adjourned.